Good evening. Today is Monday, October the 2nd, and this is the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. I'd like to call this meeting to order. For members and guests, I'd like to first call us together for a moment of silence. We've lost a number of students and I lost a former board member. I'd like to just review that with you. Earlier this month, we lost Andrea Palo, former board member here in Cabarrus County, friend, wife, a parent, and she also served this community throughout her life here in Cabarrus County. She is survived by her husband Bob and her two sons Robbie and Adam. Me in prayer for that family. Also, we'd like to be in prayer for Keegan Rice. His name is Keegan Mark Rice, and he was a junior at J.M. Robinson, and he passed away on September the 23rd. And finally, this weekend, we had a tragic loss of two lives. Ricardo Ricky Herrera Solano and Jesse Maraquan, both in the 9th and 10th grade at Concord High School. So please, if you will, join me for a moment of silence for those. Thank you. All right, board members, let's set the agenda. Is there a motion to set the agenda as written? All right, Ms. Furtinball makes the motion, and Mr. Harrison seconds it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of setting the agenda as written say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. And that vote carries 7-0. All right, board members? Oh yeah, 6-0. One thing, Mr. Fur could not be with us tonight. He is, he had shoulder, reconstructive shoulder surgery. That's going well, but now he's got pinched nerves on the other side, so he's struggling right now to keep both sides of his body together. And so y'all be in prayer for him, that he can heal quicker than he's healing right now, so. Next will be the school planning organizational presentation. Ms. Reimer is going to be presenting it. The outcome for us as board members is to provide Ms. Reimer and her team some direction to meet the goal of the December 11th vote. So when we finish this presentation, we have to give her some guidance as to what she needs to look at as far as the options that are before us and what we want her team to focus on. So that's all we'll be asked to do. We're not making any decisions, just trying to give her some concise direction. So Ms. Reimer, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, thank you, Board Chair. I appreciate everyone being here tonight so we can talk about the boundaries for Royal Oaks. I want to take just a second to talk about how this process is going to go. We'll start with introductions, because I think it's important for everyone in here to understand who we all are sitting around the table. We'll talk a little bit about the Royal Oaks project history. We will then go into what our committee goals were, the objectives and the process that we followed. We'll talk a little bit about eliminated scenarios. We'll talk about our possible scenarios that we have left. We'll look at it time on, and then we'll ask for questions and feedback from the board and...
From the board and the rest of the team here, okay? So that's kind of where we're headed tonight with this presentation. If I could, I'd like for our board members to please introduce yourselves so that everyone in the crowd knows where you're sitting and who you are, and then we'll go after that. We'll ask our committee members to please, so. Actually, we might as well just let everyone at the table, if that's okay with everybody. We'll start with Mr. Shaw.
I am Brian Shaw. I'm a board member. I'm taking Harrison, board member.
Are these still board members?
Board members are first, yes.
Cindy Furtinball, board member.
Carolyn Partridge, vice chair.
Mary Schumacher on the chair.
All right, that's it. Now, if our committee members would please introduce themselves, their name, the school they're representing, and what their role is, that would be great.
I'm Sherri Kilby. I'm the media coordinator at Royal Oaks Elementary, and...
That's plenty, thank you.
I'm Roddy Boone. I'm the communications director.
Erin Lewis, first grade teacher, Irvin Elementary.
Paige Norris, teacher liaison.
Melody Marsh, principal of Royal Oaks Elementary.
Beth Shepherd, Coltrane Web parent.
Kelly Probst, assistant superintendent.
Linda Dupkin, Charles E. Boger parent.
Tim Taylor, Coltrane Web Elementary principal.
Kathy Udi, data manager, Beverly Hills Elementary.
Rick Sleaford, principal at C.E. Boger Elementary.
Tony Williams, principal at Irvin Elementary.
Chris Lauter, superintendent.
Trish Cook, principal at Wyancoff Elementary.
Susan Fraser, lead math at Wyancoff Elementary.
Crystal Hill, assistant superintendent.
Doris Stride, transportation operations manager.
Brenda Rackoff, Beverly Hills parent.
Kelly Klutz, CFO.
Robert Klutz, in relation to Kelly, director of drivers in and school planning.
Tim Lauter, executive director of operations.
Angel Oliphant, director of elementary education in Title I.
Art Whitaker, director of transportation.
Emily Zalando, A.I.G. teacher at Charles E. Boger Elementary.
Joe Gomez, demographic planner.
Renee Moll, operations manager.
Amy Lauter, psychological services coordinator.
And I'm Lynn Reimer, deputy superintendent.
So thank you all for being here. We do have some committee members that are not able to be here tonight. Their name tags are still up, so we appreciate them as well. I'll just a second about the history of Royal Oaks Project and where we are currently. In 2014, a bond referendum was passed that a funding, a portion of funding was allocated to replace Royal Oaks Elementary School. And then in April of 2015, the Board of Education voted to build the replacement school on its existing site and to increase its current capacity. Board of Education also voted to designate Royal Oaks as a fine arts magnet in July of 2016. So that kind of phrases where we are today and how our work was kind of, kind of set forth for us. Every member of this team has used a notebook throughout our process, and tonight those notebooks are provided for our board members as well as every person on the committee. I want to take just a second to get you oriented to the notebooks, if you will, very quickly to make sure you understand where things are, and if you have any questions, we can go over that. So behind tab number one is your norms, and those were the norms that the committee created themselves and followed. Behind tab number two were the objectives, and we're going to go into those in just a few minutes, a little deeper. Behind tab number three are your current boundaries. They are both an entire district boundary as well as an impacted area current boundary. Current data sheets are behind tab four. You'll take just a second to look at those for me, behind tab four. I do want to make a point that these, those data sheets were provided to us as we began our process. And so the numbers that you see there were from the 40th day of school last year. That's the only numbers that we had. So as school has started, and we have now actual students in seats, we have current numbers that you'll see on the new data sheets. So if those numbers look a little different, it's because those were 40th day numbers last year. That's where we had to start. We started before school this year with that, and so that's why those numbers are a little bit different. All right. Then we have possible scenarios. These are behind tab five. That will be the three scenarios that we'll discuss in depth tonight, that the committee felt like kind of rose to the top with our process. Behind tab 11, you will see our eliminated scenarios and their data sheets. And then behind tab 12 is your additional documents. There's some stuff in there about magnets and some other things. Also provided in your notebooks, thanks to Dr. Probst, I appreciate your suggestion, Dr. Probst, very, very wise, is a one sheet with the current boundary as well as the three different scenarios that are left tonight, so that you can see all three of them on one page. And you have a hard copy of tonight's presentation. So that's your notebooks. Throughout the presentation, our maps will be displayed up here, as well as we've asked my staff to help move some of these maps around, so that you'll be able to see them at any time. If you have a question, please don't hesitate to stop me, okay? Questions about your notebooks? All right, good. All right, our committee members, again, I said, a couple of them can be here tonight. I want to take just a second to thank each and every one of them for their commitment that they had, not only to the amount of time that they spent and the hard work that they put into it, but that the commitment that they had to our process, and that the commitment that they had to all of the students in Cabarrus County schools. And so for that, I want to say thank you, and on behalf of Dr. Lauter, he also thanks you. It was a lot of time, it was a lot of work, and you stayed true to our process, and we really appreciate it. So thank you to all the committee members. So as we began, we had to create a decision statement. We used the TRIGO process throughout. I'm going to ask Amy Lauter in just a few minutes to help explain some of the process. But we wanted to share with you, what was our decision statement? Where did we start? What are we trying to decide? And our decision statement for the committee was to decide our recommendation for the superintendent concerning the attendance boundaries for Royal Oaks Elementary. That's what we were charged with doing. So now we're going to go into the objectives a little bit, and they're very, very important. They were important to the committee, and as I said earlier, the committee was very committed to these objectives. And so what we have asked is that our committee members are going to help us explain these a little bit tonight, because they were the ones that had to use these objectives for every scenario and rate them. So all of you know which ones you have? I'll let Ms. Lauter walk around and give you the mic as you talk about each one of our objectives.
All right, so who had the first one?
Hi, I'm Beth Shepherd, and I'm a Coltrane Web Elementary parent. I first want to thank you for coming out and listening to our options that we've put together over the past few weeks. My objective that I'm going to talk about is maximizing the best interest of all students, and that was, it's pretty paramount in this exercise. We don't want to move the students more than necessary. We want to reduce future moves and think about what's best despite the perceived fears of the community. This applied to kids currently enrolled and also to the future students in Cabarrus County. And while assessing our mapping options, we hope to create an enduring boundary that not only changes but enhances student life in Cabarrus County. Thank you.
I have number two, maximizing taxpayer dollars. We were looking at seat capacity and current assets, not allowing wasted, unused, open seats, considering that we can't go out and buy eight new buses, but utilizing the existing fleet of buses, and using current building facilities, maintenance, and equipment.
When we talked about maximizing a balance of socioeconomic status, our committee thought it was very important to be cognizant of the estimated percentages of free and reduced lunch students, and therefore trying to distribute them evenly, so we wouldn't have a case where we created environments of have and have-nots.
Under maximizing best interest of all families, we were looking at the feeder patterns of the middle schools, trying to have it, what the elementary, middle schools actually have the same feeding pattern. Families' access to their child, their children, and also the consideration of splits of schools, not splitting the schools up too much.
All right, I'm addressing minimize student ride time on the bus. Our buses operate on a three-tier bus model, and they begin at 7:00 a.m. And in order for the buses to get to their destinations on time, our bus routes need to be 45 minutes to an hour, max.
I'm addressing the tenure plan, because no one else would take it. But no, as you realize, we have a fluid document in the tenure plan, but however, our tenure plan talks about not only providing extra capacity for new seats, it also talks about replacing old schools in the system as well. Right now, Royal Oaks is one of those replacements we're talking about. We have three other older schools in the system as well. So we try to take into consideration where those fell in line for the replacement schedule as well as what new seats were available and how we were able to use those seats with
When we talked about maximizing the program choice seats, we really looked at how it affected the schools with program choices. So we wanted to make sure we didn't overcrowd schools like Royal Oaks, that's going to be an art school next year, so they weren't able to take in new students who were applying to the fine arts or Irvin, that's Ivy, so we had room left for the students who wanted to come in for the Ivy placement.
All right, we also wanted to make use of logical boundaries. We wanted to look at the boundaries that were already in existence, and also major highways, major roads, railroad tracks, boundaries that do not move.
Okay, when we looked at the, looking at minimizing collateral impact to other schools, we tried really hard to think about the impact, and we tried to affect as few students as possible while keeping the best interest of all students in mind.
So the next one is sharing resources, and that was specifically speaking to en-cour teachers and other teachers that smaller schools have to share with multiple schools instead of the majority of our elementary schools being able to have their own en-cour team just at one site.
As a committee, when looking at minimizing the impact on staff, we looked at whether or not there would be consideration taken into account for staff needing to go from one school to the next, and also considering whether or not those staff were adequately trained for the different programs.
And the final objective we looked at was minimize neighborhood disruption, which basically means the committee looked at keeping students together in a certain area, kind of keep them together going to either the elementary, middle, or high school if possible, and to use logical boundaries when possible as well.
Thank you, guys. Does, do any of the board members or anyone else have any questions about any of our objectives? Because these are very important to the entire process. Fully understand? Any questions, comments? Great, thank you. All right, so to our process, and it has been a process, a long one. School, and we, our committee is called the School Planning and Organization Committee, and we met 10 times, 10 different times. We analyzed 13 different scenarios, and then we used the TRIGO method, rated each scenario against that, and were able to eliminate 10 of the 13 plans. So what I'd like to do now briefly is take a quick look at your eliminated scenarios. There were 10 of those. For each eliminated scenario, the committee looked at a data sheet that was a summary of what was happening within that scenario. They rated it against the objectives we just went through, and then they came to a consensus to eliminate that scenario. All of that information is in your notebooks for each eliminated scenario, okay? Here's a quick, brief picture of the 10 scenarios that we looked at, and we looked at a lot of them based on comments and concerns and just different ideas from the committee to bring them all together. And as we went through them, they had the opportunity, again, to spend time on each and every one of them to say, this does not meet the criteria that we, you know, with which we need it to be able to move forward. All of those, again, are behind tab 11. So what I want to do now, just briefly, if you can, and we can go back to the eliminated maps if you need to, but what I really would like to do is kind of get oriented for just a second, so that we make sure as we talk about the three possible scenarios that are left, that we all understand the impacted areas. So this is a full district map with our elementary schools labeled on it. The area that we're discussing, if you see our little red dots up here, is this top area. The white area that you see is Kannapolis. So anything in white on this map would be Kannapolis. Royal Oaks throughout this presentation, and all of our maps will be pink, and it's at the very top with the school sitting right there. Throughout this presentation, Wyancoff, and all of our maps will be yellow. Its school sits approximately right in there, and you'll see that a little better in a few minutes. Throughout the presentation, directly below Royal Oaks and splitting that boundary somewhat is Beverly Hills. Light blue is Irvin. Lime green to the left of Wyancoff is Boger, and those are the major impact areas, which we're going to show you a little closer view. So now if we zoom in, you can see pink again, Royal Oaks, with the school sitting very close to Kannapolis. Beverly Hills is in the gray, splitting the Royal Oaks District and its school sitting a lower portion of its district. Wyancoff is directly to the left with its school sitting very close to the Royal Oaks District there. Boger in the lime green, side by side with Wyancoff. Coltrane Web is down here, and then Irvin is in the blue that also is close to Royal Oaks, okay? Just a second on the impacted area. So as the committee went through, using the data and the TRIGO process, we found that the following schools could be impacted with redistricting. Obviously Beverly Hills Elementary, Charles E. Boger Elementary, Wyancoff Elementary, and Irvin Elementary. And obviously Royal Oaks will be our fifth school, because they're being redistricted. The three possible scenarios that are left, and if you want to look at your one-page map, it will really help kind of go to that. Can see at the top, we've called this, in this initial, we have it scenario 11. It is scenario A for you, and it will be that way throughout your book. In scenario A, very quickly, and we'll get into these very in-depth in a second, just kind of want to give you an overview. In scenario A, if you look at the bottom-left portion, you're going to see a portion of Boger that's going to be moved to Royal Oaks. It's this portion right here, bottom-left. The top part of Wyancoff is being moved into the Royal Oaks District. So you notice that is scenario A. Oh, go back. Scenario B, which is scenario six, you have a portion of Royal Oaks up in the upper corner here, moved to Irvin, and Beverly Hills consolidating with Royal Oaks. Scenario C, you have Beverly Hills consolidating almost all the way with Royal Oaks, with a small portion in the bottom-left-hand corner that is currently Beverly Hills, moving to Wyancoff. So those are our three possible scenarios. Why were these schools impacted? So because they share boundaries and proximity, if we look again at Royal Oaks, pink, you can see that Beverly Hills shares a boundary with Royal Oaks. Irvin shares a boundary with Royal Oaks. Wyancoff shares a boundary with Royal Oaks. And Boger shares a proximity with Wyancoff, as if we moved students from Wyancoff into Royal Oaks. That could possibly impact Boger. Transportation is always a big concern. Can we get the kids there within 45 minutes within our tier system? We do have a railroad that runs in the middle of Royal Oaks, up and down north to south here, that's a big concern. We also have Interstate 85 that goes through there, that's a concern. So as the committee looked at some of these, those transportation facts did come into play. Open seats, we have an obligation to put as many kids in seats as possible and not to leave seats open, whether those be program seats and/or just regular seats for students. And then finally, fiscally responsible, when you build a brand-new school, you really have to make every effort to make sure that you don't open that new school with 250 kids in it when you have a capacity of 650 kids, especially in a district that's growing as fast as we did. So that's why those specific schools were impacted. So let's look specifically at scenario A. In scenario A, we have two impacted areas. Area one will move a portion of Boger into Wyancoff. Area two will move a portion of Wyancoff into Royal Oaks. So you can see those two labeled on your map. Area one is a portion of Boger current that would move into Wyancoff. Area two is a portion of Wyancoff moving into Royal Oaks. There's the current map. This is the portion we're talking about right here from Boger, moving into Wyancoff, and this top portion of Wyancoff moving into Royal Oaks. See them again, and maybe zoom in a little closer. This is the portion of Boger that we're talking about, moving from Boger to Wyancoff, and this is the portion of Wyancoff moving to Royal Oaks. So for every scenario, yes?
So you're saying the kids are right now at Boger going back to Royal Oaks, plus the kids at Wyancoff going out of Boger, is that what you're saying?
So let's go back. So we're saying this group right here, area one, is currently at Boger.
All right, so you're taking two groups out of Boger for next year, is that in this scenario, is that what that is?
No, no, no. This group is in Boger now, moving to Wyancoff. This group is in Wyancoff, currently moving to Royal Oaks.
Okay, that pulls up.
Yes.
We'll take the kids out of Boger, two groups out of Boger.
No, one group out of Boger, lower area out of Boger to Wyancoff, upper group out of Boger.
We have all the Royal Oaks kids at Boger now, is that correct?
That is correct.
So they are being taken out of Boger and being moved to this group?
Yes, Royal Oaks District would be moved.
Taking additional kids from Boger and moving into Wyancoff.
Yes.
So there are two groups that are coming out of school as it is now.
As Royal Boger is now, yes. But they are not, okay, yes. So currently, these are the kids, these kids right here are currently attending Boger, yes, the pink. And so those kids will return to Royal Oaks, yes, in that one. And also in this scenario, this group would go to Wyancoff, and this top group also goes to Royal Oaks. Okay.
Do you have the numbers for that?
We can certainly answer questions, and then I do have the numbers for those, yes. And they're also on your data sheets. You can see it for that plan. You can actually see the total number move from each school. Okay. So the data sheets, as I said earlier, this original number, K5, was a prediction. Here's students in seats now, 685, 242. Those are very close to current numbers. They may be three to five off, just according to what the daily attendance is. And you can see the disclaimer we have down here at the bottom as well. You can also see in this one, Rick, right here on this, excuse me, not Rick, but Robert, you can see where we talk about students moved out, moved in, that's also the number of students within every data sheet, okay? That should be behind tab five, and it's scenario A. Should be directly behind, right there, there we are. Yes, sir. All right, scenario B, our second scenario. We have area one, it's an area of Royal Oaks that's moved into Irvin, and area two is Beverly Hills is moved to Royal Oaks. So you can see area one. It is currently blue, this area one is right now at Boger with Royal Oaks, but this is a current Royal Oaks boundary that would move to Irvin. Area two is the current boundary for Beverly Hills, would move into Royal Oaks, be consolidated with Royal Oaks. Here's current, you can see this is pink, that's the group that would move into Irvin, and Beverly Hills is gray, that would be consolidated with Royal Oaks. So area one again, the top, that portion to Irvin, area two consolidated as whole to Royal Oaks. That's the top portion of, that's a current Royal Oaks boundary, going to Irvin. Current Beverly Hills boundary consolidating with Royal Oaks. The data sheet for that one, which is also behind tab five, scenario B, shows the numbers in and out for each one of those, how many kids were moving, current seats, and these Area C, area of Beverly Hills moved to Wyancoff, and an area of Beverly Hills moved to Royal So area one is this small area right here, which is currently in Beverly Hills, is moved to Wyancoff, and the remaining portion of Beverly Hills is consolidated with Royal The current map again, this is all Beverly Hills. In this one, this portion here will go to Wyancoff, and the remaining In this one, this portion here will go to Wyancoff, and the remaining portion of Beverly Hills consolidated with Royal Oaks. Let's see the Area 1 and Area 2 again. There's the small portion, it looks pretty big right here, small portion of Beverly Hills that would go to Wyancoff. The remaining portion of Beverly Hills consolidated with Royal Oaks. Again, it's data sheet. Again, same thing with the numbers in and out for each school, and current students in seats. All right. So we have three scenarios that the committee felt like were viable to move forward. We'll go back to Scenario A, and I'm going to ask Ms. Lauter to kind of talk about our TRIGO process and how these actually ended up here tonight for you, okay? So in Scenario A, remember, we go back to that one. That is the portion of Bogart down here in the bottom-right, that Scenario, I mean, excuse me, Area 1 moved into Wyancoff, and the top portion of Wyancoff, Area 2, moved into Royal Oaks.
So when we look at this particular scenario, we took the objectives that everyone went around the room and explained what those were. We took each of those objectives and talked at length about how do these particular details in this scenario match up with those objectives, those criteria? How do they relate to what we're talking about? So as you can see, all the different decision-making objectives are here on the left-hand column. You're going to notice some ratings in the middle, and then you're also going to notice some data points on the right-hand side. After a lot of discussion about this, we kind of condensed the information into the data point section. Each of those data points are based on what the decision-making criteria were, those objectives. So as you can see, going down the ratings, the numbers here are, on a scale of 1, and some of them actually would be 0 if they didn't meet the criteria at all, but in this particular scenario, it's just a 1. That's the lowest. It barely met the criteria, but it did meet it. Number 10 is going to be the highest number that you could obtain, and that means that it met the criteria really well. So in a full TRIGO problem-solving process, we will take Scenario A, Scenario B, Scenario C, however many scenarios the committee comes up with as a recommendation. We'll take those and compare them against each other. For this particular activity, we just rated this one scenario. Scenario A, how did it compare to the objectives? Scenario B, how did it compare to the objectives? And Scenario C, how does it compare to the objectives? So you can take a look here and notice that the scores are rather low. Scenario B, this has the Area 1 and Area 2. The ratings here, again, based on the objectives, same objectives, they haven't changed. Different data points here, based on how this particular scenario aligns with those objectives. You're going to see the ratings are a little bit higher, a 5, and mostly 7s, 8s, and some Scenario C, again, you've got Area 1 and Area 2. Same thing here. The data points show, the particular rating for Scenario C had 1, 3, some 6s, some 8s, and some 9s. So you can see the variation in those particular different scenarios.
Thank you, Amy. So based on the three scenarios, we...
Why is the rating in the book different than the rating in the...
Amy, the ratings in the book different than... Probably because it's specific to the...
There were, there was one activity that we did as a group, and the ratings were obtained from multiple groups that sat around a table and compared them individually. When we finally did the group comparison of that rating, those numbers changed because we had the individual groups. I think there were maybe three different groups, three to six different ranges. And so we took all that information, and as a large committee, we said, so what are the actual ratings going to be? And these were the ratings that the group came up with as a whole, not the individual group ratings. So what you had in the book was probably just the individual group rating. This is the correct version, yes, sir.
All right. So based on those three, the committee also discussed our timeline and what's our process moving forward. So tonight, obviously, we're having information and feedback session from the board, October 5th. If we were to move forward tonight with these three scenarios, we would look at trying to go out to our schools to give them an opportunity to meet with parents, staff, and the community, to get information and feedback from them. You can see our projected dates, that we would do that at each possible impacted school, with a public hearing on November the 6th, once that's happened. November after that, once we've gotten all the feedback, both from the session tonight as well as from the meetings out at the school, we would go back and meet with the committee, take all the information that we received from both this committee and tonight's session as well as our school sessions, and do as Amy, Ms. Lauter, mentioned, and I'll let you go back to that in a second, mentioned, and that is to compare the three scenarios with all the new information against each other with the TRIGO process, and then coming up with one recommendation for the superintendent. On November 20th, we would then try to make a recommendation to the Board of Education, have another public hearing based just solely on the recommendation then versus all three of the scenarios, and ask the board to vote on December the 11th. Amy, did you have something?
Yeah, we just pulled up the slides, the slide and the one in the book from that to mention these.
Okay. So, yeah, so go ahead and say that again, so everybody can hear that.
We pulled the information from your book. The slide for presentation for Scenario C and the rating summary sheet in your book for Scenario C are matching.
All right. Questions?
All right, board members. Do you have questions? And before we begin, I just want to thank everyone. I know a lot of hours were spent doing this, and people have sacrificed a lot of time to put this together. I know a lot of thought's gone into it. So I really appreciate Ms. Reimer and Ms. Lauter and the countless others that were involved. I appreciate the time that y'all put into this, and I think it's well-thought-out, and now it's just up to the board members to ask questions. So I'll turn it over to anyone who's willing to ask a question.
Mr. Chairman, you know, always have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Ms. Reimer, could you go over again on the scenarios? I'm looking at Number C here, or letter C. The students in seats versus resident attending. I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to make a calculation out of this, and...
Yes, absolutely. So, oh, sorry. Students in seats, this 417 at Beverly Hills right now means there's 417 kids that are actually sitting in Beverly Hills today, okay?
That's current before any changes.
No, they're actually there. Yes, yes, before we...
Current before changes.
Yes, ma'am, before we change anything, absolutely. Resident attending means students that live or reside within Beverly Hills boundary that's actually attending Beverly Hills. So there's 300. Of the 417 students that currently attend at Bogart right now, 325 of them live in Beverly Hills District.
And where are the other ones from?
So the other ones are going to be from our magnet. There's approximately 79 magnet students that come from different schools to attend Beverly Hills for...
That's where I'm not getting, it's not adding up for me. I feel like I want to make this an equation. So approximate magnet is 49?
Yeah, approximate magnet, 79.
79, not 49?
No, no. It's, right now, it's a total of 79. So that number is not all, that's not, again, that was, so that's the reason why this is so hard, and I apologize. This number was a projected number based on all this, what we currently have right now, and we can tell you, and the reason, there's another portion of this, it's very difficult, is we just get data in. So Jo does something called geocoding, which Mr. Walters is very familiar with. She just finished that today. So we have current numbers. So that's why I'm giving you, this may have been a projected number, but we have currently, and Ms. Udi is also here, she can tell you, 79 magnet students that are there. We also have students that are on transfer, that are in there, that are not magnet students, as well as any special program. So it's about 100 kids total.
So transfers and special programs are not shown on this chart?
Correct.
Okay, if that answers it.
Most of our numbers that we had to begin with are always going to be resident students, students that live within that boundary, because that's all the information we have until we actually have student data when the students show up in seats. For example, at Colton Webb, we know how many students reside at Colton, that live in that area. We don't know how many of them are going to show up, and we don't know how many magnet students he's actually going to have until they show up. So that's why those numbers are just a little different, and why the committee had to start with projected numbers.
Okay, so that's, actually, I may be on Scenario B data here. Because that's not the same. In the book, it was listed as Scenario 8. Was that what translated to C?
Yes, yes, ma'am. It is, Scenario C. And those, yeah.
Well, this is different here, that's why I'm...
This is current. This is what we pulled today, the magnet and everything.
Was that not... This in C in here, but that's not the same as that C.
So throughout the process, and Ms. Gomez can speak to this too as well, is like, when we start with an original page, we do updates as we can get updates throughout with the committee. So we started well before school, and that's the reason why we put the ones that were supposed to be behind Tab 5. Those should be more current for you.
Okay. So what, my goal is, I want to be able to calculate what the projected new enrollment is with this change, with this Scenario C change. So I add the current students in seats, and then plus or minus my move-in, move-out. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Jo can get those numbers for you, we have those totals.
Because where we end up, I think is a factor the board needs to consider, is how full is that school, and what's the probability of increased growth in that area?
So one thing I think I can speak to a little bit on that, and again, it's not going to help necessarily with questions, is so everything in these scenarios is a projection and a guess. So, well, not everything, but when we're trying to say, how many students will sign up and travel for the arts magnet program at Royal Oaks? We don't know that, because we've never had one. So we have a, we have a guess, right? And so we're trying to do it. So that, it becomes very difficult. I think you said earlier, like, I want this to be a formula. I want it to be this number, this number. It won't work out that way, but we get into a pretty good area, and that is a little confusing, but we can, we can basically say, this is our best estimate of how many students will be there, knowing students are moving. I know that's not...
It is, and the other point that, very well said, is that magnet students, we have no idea. If we move kids, we have no idea if the magnet kids are going to go or not. So when you say 417 are in seats right now, we really only have 387 that are current resident students. So where are we moving the magnet students? That's a whole nother equation. And then of the transfer students, how many of the staff kids are still going to attend there? So that's why we, all of our data has to go around resident students, and then we have to plug in the kids that actually show up. And so that's the reason why it's a little difficult.
No, I understand, but I think if we, if we do a consistent formula or calculation, whatever you call it, and we know we have enough growth room for kids either that want to go to Royal Oaks, or kids in Royal Oaks who choose to go to a different school, because they don't want to participate in that program. So I just want to make sure we have enough gap across the board, that we're not hitting schools at 97, 98% at the end of this.
Sure. Jo can pull that, and she's working on it for us right now.
Right, and we certainly work on that in every scenario, and we can answer it, but it's still very difficult to say, well, there'll be 50 seats at Royal Oaks, because, for example, if Beverly Hills is consolidated into Royal Oaks, right now, as Ms. Reimer said, there are 87 people who travel to Beverly Hills for STEM. There are 300, whatever the number is, 300 that are resident students, right? So what we don't know, for example, is how many of those resident students will actually travel to another school for STEM? We have no idea. So that's when it gets very sticky, because there are now five choices. When it was my neighborhood school, that's where I went. If I now have to travel, then I may not. And I may have come from one school to Beverly Hills, but I may not come from that same school if we're at Wyancoff. So all those things are always kind of this moving target. It's really the negative side of choices. Even when they say, oh, I'm definitely going to go there, we really don't know that till they show up. But if you say, what's your best guess of how many students are coming to Royal Oaks, then under this scenario, then we can tell you. What's your best guess of Wyancoff? And that's how we make all these choices, which is difficult, but it's ultimately the hardest part of this process, I think.
But we'll be able to tell you, and we should be able to tell you, you know, what resident students would be, but we won't know magnets. All we can do is, okay, if 79 are 2's ago, then this is how many we would have. If 50 are 2's ago, this is how many we would have. And again, the transfer piece, we still don't know, is around 100 students. So we would be able to give you numbers based solely on resident students that live in. So that's the reason why we kind of stay away from that, because it's just such a guessing game. But I do, I do see what you need, and we'll see what we can come up with, okay? But it'll be a guess, but we'll do the best we can. Ma'am? 618. So there's, all right, so here's another piece to this, and we can, I really kind of understood, put this sheet up there, because it becomes very complicated. Jo just said maybe 618 students if we went with Scenario C at Royal Oaks. Well, how many, what percentage of Royal Oaks actually attends Royal Oaks right now? So we start looking at that, how many kids are actually transferring out? There's a percentage of students that are assigned to Royal Oaks that don't go to Royal Oaks, whether that be magnets, transfers, or whatever. So then you have to take 80% of that number, which would lessen this again, probably put somewhere around 580 kids at Royal Oaks with this scenario. But again, 100% guess in an estimate. Yes, sir?
I'm intending to ask this question a very broad kind of way, so it's a transportation question. And in my mind, it is the number of miles our buses travel currently by the top map, and how many miles each new district would travel by each of the proposed A, B, and C maps. But I'm also asking, again, a best guess about parent and car rider miles per day, per week. I'm not sure how to quantify that, but I'm asking, how can we quantify the drive time and the drive distance for the buses that, all the wear and tear on the buses, but also how we, or any of these plans might, I'm trying to use the word carefully, shift the transportation to the parents? How can we quantify transportation very precisely?
I'm going to start, and then Art, if you want to go down there and answer which Doris on that one. First thing I want to say is, in terms of mileage, when we were looking at this, we didn't quantify the mileage, but we looked at ride times. Because you can take, like in Scenario C, and you see the Irvin, you're moving, I mean, the upper part of Royal Oaks moving into Irvin. That ride time might equal actually something that's in town, right? So we looked at time on the bus, and we felt, if you look back at your rating sheets, on Scenario A, do I not have it on? I have a big number of students.
So on Scenario A, I'll just use this one, and you might want to pass it over to Art. On Scenario A, if you look how we looked at ride times, we rated that rather low, but if you look on Scenario B, when it comes into ride times, it was much higher than Scenario A. And then the same on Scenario C, we actually thought that was the strongest, meaning we mitigated long ride times, and it was, it was more equal. We felt like children were getting about the same ride time. I don't think looking at mileage might give you the answer you want.
And I appreciate that, and I understand the ratings, and I participated in some of those. And the question is, whether it's ride time or ride miles, can we quantify it in terms parents would understand and appreciate, as opposed to these ratings? I'm sure the ratings are accurate, but how can we at some point inform parents that they would see their child on the bus for a period of time different than it is currently?
We think the routes would all kind of fall into our same scenario right now, where we try to get under an hour. I think it would almost be impossible until you fill the students in here to come up with an estimated time. But the same promise that we work with, and again, it's something, I don't want to say a promise, it's what we shoot for, right? For an hour or less. Do you want to add to that, Art?
I mean, I would agree with that totally. I mean, each scenario does pose a few tricky issues involving the interstate and railroad crossings and things like that. So to... So, to try to quantify a particular mileage, it might be a little bit more miles, but it could be a quicker time, only because of the, the geography of that district.
We did, I did go out and do some run studies, looking at scenario A. And if you look down in the portion that, what they're calling Area 1 at the bottom, that would be the Boger area, the thing that we did discover while I was doing that was those students who live closer down to the George Lyles area, their ride would be a little bit different, and they would actually have to use George Lyles to go up and cut across, instead of using the interstate. So that does make their ride time seem a little bit more lengthy. However, putting students on the bus, we may have to ride less students in order to keep the time within our three-tier window. So, that's what we'll have to do. Our buses won't be quite as full if we have to go that far, but it is our goal is to keep them in that 45-minute window, regardless of how far they have to travel. The same thing kind of holds true for what you were looking at in the Mount Pleasant area. When we look to take in scenario B, Area 1 to Irving, those are a lot, that's a lot of miles, a quick mile. The miles that you're traveling from up in the area closest to Mount Pleasant are quicker, because there's less students to pick up, the time travels a little bit faster. So, in Cabarrus County, our footprint changes so much, that we have so many different streets and roads and road construction, that we're just trying to work around that 45-minute window in every scenario, to get our kids to and from school. So, we don't expect the ride times to be any more, just maybe less riders. Does that help?
Yes, and is there a way to quantify the best guess of the number of buses we would have in each of these configurations? Again, I'm asking a very broad question.
Absolutely. Most of the time, what we, we do is from area to area, and we do, do this every year. As students come in and students go out, what we try to do is to fill those buses as much as capacity, and we shuffle and shift. I know this year, we've had some shuffling and shifting from, you know, adding some new magnet programs. We've had to do that every year. So, we're continuing to shuffle and shift every year. So, and that's why we manage to maintain the three-tier that we have.
And, is there any way to ballpark some of these estimates in the next iteration of data that we receive?
It kind of depends on how many students we ended up, we end up with each school.
And again, projections.
Yeah, if we go with a Royal Oaks that's got 45 buses now, and we put another, you know, 300 kids in there, obviously, that's going to double how many buses have to service that school. But they won't be servicing another school. The main conflict will come, is if we move too much into Wyancoff, because Wyancoff is on our first tier. Okay? That would be our main conflict, right there, as far as buses and equipment.
I think the board would appreciate knowing those trade-offs that...
There are trade-offs, yes, sir.
That would come into play in the use of county resources and parents' comfort level with, of the distance and the travel, and whatever we can quantify for them, for each of these potential scenarios.
We'll be more than glad to get those.
We can do some numbers.
Thank you.
I think just a second, go back to one of our data issues real quick. And go back to our... So, in this plan, scenario C, if you look right here, this is the projected resident student. Projected resident, resident student from scenario C. Is that going to be accurate? No, it's not. It's not going to be accurate, because Royal Oaks will be up on our school, and we don't know how many magnet students will come in from Royal Oaks magnet, we've had 722. Wyancoff is a splash, and currently is a neighborhood STEM. According to what happens with that, again, you don't, that, that may or may not be the case. And if, in scenario C, Beverly Hills is consolidated, we've got to look at where our STEM kids will run, but those kids also then move into this number. So, while these are projections based on resident students, the magnet piece of this still has to be figured out before we can say exactly how many, how many students. I'll just kind of clarify. We can estimate it, but it's just, again, a guess. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Ms. Carpenter.
I know, you don't want to talk about this. You know what I'm going to probably say. But one of the things this board could consider is if we make, I mean, those students are STEM students now. Those teachers are trained, trained in STEM at Beverly Hills right now. If this board would consider to make in Royal Oaks a STEM, I know, and Ladder's probably going to kick me under the table, but still, those teachers are trained. And we do not have a STEM elementary school. And, and two, that would give those parents at Beverly Hills, two things. We're giving them a new school, we're keeping their students together, and their students still would have STEM, and it would be an arts magnet. And it would be giving them something else to consider. I know that everybody's going to throw something at me. But, but still, it would, we're, we're doing a lot of different things for them, and that's something that could be considered.
Okay, so yeah, we can discuss that, that has been brought up. But I do want to make sure we're fully aware of what we're talking about. So, STEM, STEAM is STEM with an arts focus, right? And there's a whole lot around that. And we've talked about that with our, our families, and they absolutely did not, they didn't want that to begin with, okay? Right now, Royal Oaks has a, a plan, an in-depth plan, and are training and preparing for the arts. They are not prepared, nor have any plan to be prepared to infuse that with STEM. So that's, that's a big concern from a curriculum side. I'm sure Dr. Hill could speak to that if she needed to, a little bit more, or even Bridget Jones. Also, we are one of the, a very few districts around us that do not have a fine arts magnet. Union County has one, CNMS has multiple. A lot of the districts around us have fine arts magnets, we do not. We did do a survey, and our staff, our parents, said we want a fine arts magnet. The other thing I really want to point out is, again, STEAM and STEM are very, very similar. Where are we going to get kids from? So, if you think about making it a magnet, remember, Beverly Hills, right here, is currently a STEM magnet. Okay? Colton Webb is a STEM magnet. Arbrown McAllister is a STEM magnet. Wyancoff was supposed to come onboard this coming year as a STEM magnet. And we've had to put that on hold, not only because of our redistricting, but because of figuring out, who's going to feed them? Where are we going to pull kids from? So I have a few numbers, I looked at that, trying to say, is this an option? Is it truly an option? Mount Pleasant Elementary School sends one kid for STEM, one. We have Odell, who send about 80 kids, and guess where they go? Colton Webb. That's how we are feeding Colton Webb. So when we start talking about STEAM versus STEM, our parents are confused, our staff have not been trained, and we're going to hurt the programs such as Colton Webb? Even Beverly Hills or Arbrown McAllister, because they're pulling from all over the district. Where are we going to get kids from? So that's the biggest concern for us. We can say, we can make it STEM, we can force our staff, we can do all those things. But at the end of the day, we're still going to be sitting with 250 kids at Royal Oaks, because where are they going to go? They're going to, our parents are most likely going to choose STEM versus STEAM, because they don't know what STEAM is. And it's, it's, so for the district, from my perspective, again, curriculum and Bridget, and people can talk about that, at least in this scenario, we have committed to a fine arts magnet. Our staff have been committed to that. There's not one anywhere in our district. And so, if the board were so direct as to do STEM, we'd make the best out of it. But that's the reason, at this point, that it would not be a recommendation from us.
Other question?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you had them as a STEM before, where were you going to send them then?
Who did we have as STEM before?
You, Beverly Hills, they were STEM.
Yeah, they are currently STEM. Beverly Hills is currently STEM. Yes, ma'am. It, you know, right now, there's a lot of discussion that has to take place. But right now, if one of the two latter scenarios, B or C, were to be chosen, then the STEM students would have the option to return to their home school. If they chose not to go to STEM, if they wanted STEM, they would then go to Wyancoff. Because Wyancoff is slated to be a STEM school, and has already been approved as a STEM school. And they would take the students that are currently feeding Beverly Hills. So, we already have a pipeline of students that are going to Beverly Hills, that then could feed that program continued at Wyancoff. I do, I don't, Joe, can you pull one up for me? I don't have it currently in this PowerPoint. We can definitely get that for you. Yeah, I may be able to, so, Dr. Ladder, somebody may have to help me a little bit here. I know Robert Clutz, some of you guys, Tim can help. So you have... Okay. So, Royal Oaks, Beverly Hills, Colton Webb, Irvin, and Arbrown McAllister all feed Concord Middle and Concord High. There's a small portion of Beverly Hills that goes to Northwest Middle, where Wyancoff goes, and Northwest High. Wyancoff feeds Northwest Middle, Northwest High. Boger?
A small group of Irvin that goes to Mount Pleasant.
Yes, I'm sorry. There's a small group of Irvin that goes to Winkler.
A small group of Irvin that goes to Mount Pleasant Middle and Mount Pleasant High. So it feeds, Irvin feeds Concord Middle and Concord High, and Mount Pleasant Middle and, and Mount Pleasant High.
There's also a portion of one of those that feed Winkler. Which one is that, Weddington? Maybe Weddington?
Yes. No, some of the blue.
Some of the blue.
Some of Irvin goes to Mount Pleasant.
No.
That's right.
No. Let's see if I have the big, let's go to... How far over here? Robert? Do you know? Right in here? So this portion of Irvin goes, somewhere in here goes to Mount Pleasant, small portion.
Hey, Ms. Reimer?
Yes, ma'am.
On scenario C, does that adjustment of Beverly Hills into Wyancoff, does that line up the middle school and high school then?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's for now, until we hit the high school redistricting, right? Yeah, I'm going to retire before I miss.
Yes, this portion does line up part of Beverly Hills with Northwest Middle, Northwest High.
It also does put them in the STEM feed, correct?
Right here. Yeah, here's the railroad.
And that was what the committee basically did in that scenario. In one of them, all of Beverly Hills travels together, the whole group gets to stay. And in this one, you have that small group of Beverly Hills that goes to Northwest Middle, say, well, let's clean that up and make that a straight feeder.
Well, board members, we don't have to settle on any one, we just need to give them guidance as to which three or four we want them to focus on, so they can work on their final recommendation. And they've brought, these three scenarios have popped up to the top, based on the committee's research and, and the way they've done their, their TRIGO process. And, and if these are the three that you would like them to continue to do more work on, then we can give them that direction. If there's another one that seems to be, that seems to rise to the top. I know that when I looked at the other outliers, the other scenarios, scenario one, two, three, four, and six draft, all ended up putting elementary schools in an overpopulation situation. So, they weren't tenable, just because they added too many students to the schools. Then the others were seven, nine, 10, and 12. And, and they had various issues with each one of those. But, it, it seemed like the team chose six, eight, and 11, or A, B, and C, as the ones that they felt were the most, demonstrated the best opportunities, based on the criteria that they listed, so.
Mr. Chair, do we need a decision tonight on what to go forward with, or can we, I guess, feed that back to you?
I think we should, we should probably, if, by the, by next Monday, Ms. Reimer, would that be okay?
No, let me, let me just kind of give you, and Dr. Ladder can help with this as well. So, the, the purpose of tonight is to be able to say, hey, we want you to take this to the public. Like, yes, go get feedback on these, so there's, or is there a different direction you want us to go in? If you can't, if none of these sit well with you, and you want to come up with something totally different, give me a direction. Because this is all that the committee can do to meet our criteria. So, if there's one of these you want us to look at something else with, we're great to do all of it. We'll take all of your feedback, we'll look at all of them. But our next job is to get out to all the schools, and spend time listening to the parents talk about these scenarios. And if we don't have, I mean, like, we've got to have that moving forward. We can't wait, because right now, our schedule, it's Thursday night, we go to Royal Oaks, and say, here are the possible three scenarios, and get feedback from them. And then, the 16th, we're doing Beverly Hills. And October is also, guys, I have to throw this out, School Choice Month. So we're beginning our, we have all kind of school meetings with School Choice. These dates are extremely limited, and the timing of this is crucial for our families and our schools. So that's the reason why we just need to say, are these three scenarios something you want us to get feedback on from the community? Or, give me a different direction?
Mr. Chairman?
Just because I'm a visual learner, as you go to each of these schools and compile their comments that, that you gather, can it be very strictly templated, so that after the fifth, you can show us general comments about transportation and choice and, and other items? But the next cycle follows that same pattern of transportation, choice, other comments, and stick to the same template after each of these iterations of, of school input, if you can, please?
You mean buckets, like buckets of, here are what the, yes, and we'll be...
That way, I'm looking across something that this school had these comments about that topic consistently.
And if there's specific topics that you really want to see in there, let me know, and we'll, we'll make sure we kind of arrange those.
Obviously, just, you know, these buckets.
Those criteria, gotcha.
Following, following the same pattern for each new set of input you get. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but just going back to the basics here, is the reason we come up with these scenarios to begin with, is we have a 650-seat school that we built, or was a 250-seat school, it's now a 650-seat school.
Correct.
So we needed to find enough students to fill that school. And that's, you're looking for about, how many, 400 kids?
Yeah, according, yes, somewhere between. And the committee said, do we have to have an exact number? Would we be okay with 350, 375? So we're just trying to look at what scenario got the closest and still left seats.
That's how you created these scenarios, that you said you have to come up with 400 additional kids, besides the ones that are...
Somewhere between 300 and 400 kids, yes.
And some of those can be magnet, or, I mean...
We, we did leave, within that number, we left some seats. We wanted to leave enough seats for the magnet. Because we, at this point, have no idea how many families will choose, but...
Okay, and then, I mean, I grant, you had a big committee, you had a lot of parent representation on the board, you've had 10 minutes, 10 meetings. I would like to hear our parent representatives giving some thoughts on feedback on the process, or thoughts on, on these scenarios, if you don't mind.
On the spot, Linda.
So I appreciate your time, you know these schools, you have, I mean, you obviously have a student in, in the school, so.
I'm from Charles E. Boger, I'm a parent from there. And so, part of what we talked about with the B and C kind of rose to the top. And then, we were then, kind of went, well, we kind of need another scenario. For the fact that the other two scenarios are just Beverly Hills. And so the other scenario then became scenario A, because we were looking at that, including with Mount Pleasant. So for scenario A, which is the one that affects my school the most, you're taking part of Wyancoff over to Royal, Royal Oaks, and part of that Wyancoff that you're taking over, they will have a split middle school, because right now, they're supposed to go to Northwest. So they'll be moved over to Royal Oaks. And then you're taking the Boger over to, I think of about 200 Boger students, over to Wyancoff. And so, you, you're asking about more of the process, or kind of how it affected the schools? Oh, as far as the scenarios? Um, well, there's the, the emotional, and then there's the, the logical. Looking at scenario for the logical, there was a lot of, like, the railroad tracks. Going across that for the Wyancoff students. I think for the Wyancoff, there was a split road. That part of the road went to one area, and then the other part was still at Wyancoff. Neighborhood. And then, of course, with Boger, we, most of these were at Wyancoff at one time, and now are being redistricted back into Wyancoff. And I know also with number one, in Boger, that there is some growth coming. And so we were... we were kind of concerned about possible overcrowded for Wyancoff, because there's some new development in that area. Does that kind of answer your question?
I'm a Coltrane Webb parent, so I am not being affected by any of these scenarios, just to kind of, the ones that were eliminated, I was, but I just wanted to make that clear, that I do not have children in the schools that are potentially changing. Scenario B and Scenario C, to me, kind of organize the district a little bit better, and I think that we have to be very cognizant of the fact that Cabarrus County is going to be growing, exploding in the next couple of years, I'm sure, barring any economic downturn, which of course is very realistic these days. So with that said, Scenario B and Scenario C, for me, kind of align things a little bit better, especially with the feeder schools kind of lining up a little bit better. So not only are we reorganizing to kind of make those projected numbers work, but I think it kind of creates a little bit of area to, you know, we're making an arts program, so that's a positive. And I think these two scenarios would allow for later positives to happen, just because of the, what I do for a living, I want to organize things. So I'm, it's a very organized layout. I'm not a numbers person, so that, to me, is very difficult for me to understand that. But what I do understand is with the transportation, we are always very sensitive to that, to make that work. So these scenarios, I think, are our best foot forward to kind of make this less of a collateral impact, because it's going to be a change no matter what. There's a, there's a revision being made. So hopefully, the revisions made are not negative and more positive for parents that are making the change. So I don't know if you want to speak, because you're Beverly Hills parent, so that might, this might be a little sensitive, more sensitive to you.
Thank you. I do have a few things that I would like to add. I question why we would eliminate 400 seats in our school system that is growing and is also overcrowded at this point. I would hate to see us make a short-sighted decision to fill a school on a timeline when all seats are needed right now. I also question why Concord would go into Kannapolis. A lot of our kids, and I've said this in our committee meetings, so nobody's hearing it for the first time, many of our kids walk to school. If you come by during the day, there's usually a bike out front, they ride their bikes. Many families that live close to Church Street can walk downtown, go out to eat, go get ice cream at the Creamery. So you're really, you're asking these parents who are vital part of a neighborhood to leave Concord and go to Kannapolis for their elementary school. We also tried to look at the socioeconomic impact of this, and you are affecting, or in the end, you have really not positively impacted the SES for the new Royal Oaks school. You are, with Beverly Hills moving completely into Royal Oaks, you're still looking at some pretty high numbers. And you're also taking parents who could quickly get to Beverly Hills to photocopy for an hour, or to come for duty-free lunch on their lunch break. Very important things, very important. You're asking them to drive even further, up 85, up 29, through stoplights, through the new roundabout, you know, to get up there. So I really think that it would negatively impact parental involvement. Again, that's my opinion, but I'm up at Beverly Hills all the time. So I do feel like that would be negatively impacted. And I appreciate your questions about the drive times, really hammering home some numbers. We didn't really have a lot of numbers in terms of drive times and mileage. We, we looked at maps, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we just sort of looked at it and said, well, this looks a certain way, this looks a certain way, but we really didn't have hard numbers to compare across scenarios in terms of busing and ride times. So that's something that I would also like to know. And again, because I'm coming from Beverly Hills, where it's a small neighborhood, where I know kids walk to school, where kids ride their bikes to school. I live, I think, in what would be considered the northern tier of the Beverly Hills school zone, and I can get to school in about two to three minutes. And on the map, that looks like a long ways, but I go through two stoplights, two stop signs, and I'm there. It's a, it's quick. Thank you.
Ms. Reimer? I have another question.
Sure.
So I really like the lining up of Wyancoff and Scenario C. Okay, but I think that fragments Royal Oaks more. I like the box, you know, when we look at trying to close in a district more in a circle, the optimum, I know that the school is way on that north side of the district, but to close it in more, because I don't think there's very many nice routes in Scenario C coming from the northern part of Royal Oaks down to Dakota Street. I mean, that's just kind of a little bit of crazy.
So that's current. So how, talk, can you speak just to that briefly, Doris, about that ride time up there for those kids?
Like I mentioned earlier, we're looking at 45 minutes, because we're hitting that tier, you know? 35 to 45 minutes, it doesn't really matter how far out they are, those buses are not going to be full. That's what you just got to remember, because if that bus needs to do three different runs, it's got to get there. So we're coming down from up there, and we're having to come all the way into basically Concord, closer up to 85, because they've shut all of our bridges off to go over 85 and come around through Kannapolis. So that's what we're having to do now. Hopefully, when all the construction kind of levels up, we'll be able to start cutting back across, but right now, we're having to come straight down and go across. That's best I can tell you right now.
But what if we could marry B and C? What if we take that alignment of Wyancoff from C, but take the, if you go back to B, take the nice box that it creates by doing that shift to the box of, have you guys talked about that?
We've talked about that.
And it doesn't work?
I think it was one of the scenarios.
I think we wanted to keep one Beverly Hills together.
We're still going to get split in C, just at 99.
I think they were looking at keeping one whole scenario of Beverly Hills all together. That was why we didn't split it. But we can't.
Yeah, which Wyancoff, can Irvin handle that?
Yes.
I mean, I would honestly like to see that combination, because I think those are the two, that's the appealing point to me of each of those scenarios. C, the appealing point is lining up Wyancoff. You're still splitting Beverly Hills a little bit, you're doing a one-third, two-thirds, whatever it is. But B has that bringing the community closer in and not having the fragmented. I would think that from an Irvin standpoint, there is more of an association of people moving out into the country, of one, the whole light blue section there would feel perhaps more of a community, as opposed to splitting up that kind of squealy Royal Oaks in version C.
Yeah. So it, and you're, what you're asking for is this section here to clean up to go to Wyancoff, and this section to be the way it is? So taking Scenario B and removing that. Just a tidbit of information, there's 99 total kids that reside in this area.
I thought there were 99 in the Wyancoff section, the Wyancoff adjustment at the bottom of number two, I thought was 99.
That was 79. This is 99 total kids, only 45 of these kids attend Royal Oaks right now.
They go to charters or elsewhere, or?
Some of them are in Mount Pleasant, some of them have transferred out to magnets. 13 of them, I mean, 13 currently attend Irvin, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can work on that, so.
And the other thing is, too, if you, if you keep Royal Oaks and Wyancoff in that bundle, where it, they almost become a circle together.
Say that one more time, sorry.
If you, if we would, we line up Wyancoff, we keep Royal Oaks in that more compact perimeter, those two schools are so close geographically. I just think it would almost become more of a community from the standpoint of even, even kids wanting to cross over between the Wyancoff programs and the new Fine Arts program. And like I said, and then having Irvin more compact as we move out into the rural part of the county. And I shouldn't say compact, that's not the right word, maybe, but more contiguous as we go out into the rural part of the county.
So you're looking for Scenario D.
D.
Scenario D, which is?
Whatever B and C is together, those are the two key points, I think, that are appealing. Does anybody else feel that way?
If you look.
Yeah, if you'll tell me specifically what data you want, I'll be happy to get it for you. The GIS data? It still needs to be more specific, what you want GIS data for. There's a ton of GIS. Okay. We'll talk after this is over, and you tell us what you want. Yes, ma'am.
Will you discuss for my benefit as well, the impact of each scenario on overcrowding or potential overcrowding at Boger and Wyancoff? Will any of this relieve any overcrowding? Which scenario would help with current overcrowding? Okay, so currently, we know that Boger is going to grow. However, Boger is not overcrowded now, and has a capacity of 9, 940, and currently has 6, 645. We expect Boger to be able to grow somewhere between 250 to 300, 390 kids in the next three to five years. We're not sure what the redistricting will look like when we do the middle and high schools for that, so we expect Boger to be at capacity in five, five or so years. Scenario A does move multiple students out of Boger. However, it moves them down to a current number of about 400, 450 kids, so that school would be half-empty, with hopes that we fill it up within five years. So that's the Boger piece. Wyancoff, in a couple of these scenarios, according to what happens with magnets, could be overcrowded if we move a ton of students into Wyancoff. So if we move a lot of students into Wyancoff, such as 200 or more students into Wyancoff, with, according to what happens with magnets, it could become overcrowded. We don't, there is no growth, let me be real clear, there is no growth up in this area. And so when we talk about open, you know, the seats at Beverly Hills, and why would we lose 400 seats? Well, there is no growth in this area, and we just created 400 seats. So since there's no growth, and we've created those seats in this area, then that's part of the reason why the move of consolidating Beverly Hills is a little more intuitive, based on the growth up here. So we do expect Boger to grow, however, we've got to be very careful how many we move out and how long we expect them to grow. We'll have another school half-empty.
That answers some of it?
Right, and then the other two?
Meaning Royal Oaks? All right, say that again, I'm not sure what you, take a pretty question.
Irvin, Wyancoff, and the other two in the area. How, how a number?
Yeah, so, okay, so in this one, the one that we just spoke about a minute ago, again, there's only 45 kids in this area right now that are currently attending Royal Oaks. So Irvin is well in their capacity right now, and that would not impact them, nor their school choice program. I think 45 would be okay. And then, I think that's the, that's the last one. We've talked a little bit about Royal Oaks, and we have looked at, most of the scenarios that we do, we look at Royal Oaks being somewhere between 550, 5 to 550 kids, though, most of those scenarios, resident-student-wise, fit in that category, but until we know the magnets, it wouldn't, it wouldn't help.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Reimer, was there a reasoning behind the sequence of these schools and the, and the public forums or discussions?
So.
And the reason I'm asking is this, and I'm venturing a guess here, that Beverly Hills, by any of these scenarios, is the most impacted, if that's a fair statement?
Scenario B and C, absolutely. Scenario A, no, yes.
But by all of the possibilities here, I gather that Beverly Hills would be the most impacted, and I'm trying to use my words correctly here. So my question is, whatever this logic is behind the sequence of these meetings?
I'll be happy to explain it.
Is it fair for Beverly Hills to go have the first word, or the last word, or to have a second word, so that Beverly Hills can be socialized or to, about the progress or the developments from all of these conversations? But I heard something in your voice, and I feel like it's worth saying that Beverly Hills needs some input and some constant communication.
Yes, so originally, our thoughts were, we've got to go to Beverly Hills tomorrow, because we want that community to hear and understand. However, we had to step back and think, we've got to give those parents time to, one, hear the message, two, plan to be able to be there. And so that's the reason why we chose October 16th for Beverly Hills, because that gives them enough time between now and the time we show up to understand the plan, to ask questions, to be able to gather themselves, whatever it is that they want to do. Royal Oaks knows in this situation that we're going to be redistricting, so that's the reason why we chose to go there this Thursday. The rest of them had to work around school choice, the principals' availability, and organizing this around all the open houses. So we have a ton of open houses in October, and we did not want to have an open house at the middle school for a STEM program when Irvin's going to have this meeting at their school. So we had to organize it that way. So, yes, it was very intentional, and it was intentional around Beverly Hills. And to further that, further communication, that's the reason why we also added multiple public hearings, so that they're able to speak at every business meeting and at every public hearing meeting, so there's an opportunity for parents to speak to the board five separate times, so.
And it goes without saying that all these parents of any school can come to any of these meetings to discuss and reiterate their concerns, instead of just their own neighborhood meeting. And I would encourage all the parents and representatives here to show up at every meeting, if you, if you so felt a need.
Okay. Rob?
A question related to Mr. Lauter over there. On the 10-year plan, both B and C here have the Beverly Hills closing. Would you be using that school for the flex thing that you, you'd been talking about, where we're combining other schools, or what would the plan be there?
Well, if you, I don't know if it's out, I guess it's still, okay. What you see is, in the, in the five-year timeframe, we were doing both the swing schools, trying to replace the elementary schools. The county's indicating, they're not going to build us three replacement schools, they're going to build us maybe two, okay? And in doing so, at that point in time, when that swing school process was over, we were going to have two schools that was going to draw the populations of Coltrane Webb, Arbrown McAllister, and Beverly Hills, okay? So it was going to go away in that timeframe, any scenario we pick. But what this does is allows this to go away sooner than later, but it also then may allow us to not build just two schools for replacements, but maybe only one, because now I've only got to combine two elementary schools that are of older age. So I may only have to build one old elementary school, thus saving maybe $20 million, depending on where I can build a school for, you know, 850 kids, just how. depending on where I can build a school for, you know, eight hundred and fifty kids to house, you know, Coltrun Web and, and Arbrown McAllister together. So that's, that's, that's the option you have here to help get you toward that ten-year plan a couple of years earlier because you're eliminating the need for those old schools. And answer your question about what would I do with the existing Beverly Hills facility? Currently, Beverly Hills facility untouched, we continue to use. But if I have to go in and try to renovate it, which we, where I, I've got, I think, a data sheet that showed the cost of maintaining that school was quite a bit higher than the, of the other schools. Some because of its age and its proximity and, and the fact that we have, cost per student is quite a bit higher. What we'd do there is we would go in and eliminate a portion of that school that was built back in the forties and fifties. And then utilize a portion of it that was built back in the nineties, that eight classrooms there, and then come back and put another reuse to that school. But we'd be able then to eliminate a portion of it that's gone. I can't do that with students there. Obviously, I can't go in and tear something down and build it back in three months. Or I can't go in and renovate it over fifty percent because I have to make it meet one hundred percent code at that time. And when I do that, I just cannot make it meet one hundred percent code on that topography on that site. That site has got a tremendous amount of topography and if I have to meet one hundred percent code, they won't go to the playground. Go to the hospital and march back because of access down this, that hill. But it's, it's, it's a pretty, pretty serious terrain problem. So what we're doing is basically just shifting that closure forward a couple of years in this scenario or about three years in this scenario, and then allowing us to continue to move forward with it. But we would reuse that property for some other use, but we'd have to obviously take a portion of that school down and go back with a newer, newer building to help utilize the eight classrooms that are remaining.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Prokes wanted me to be brief and I apologize that I have not been. And Mr. Chairman, is it, is it possible or feasible, after we go through this timeline, that in January or February, we update the ten-year plan to match these developments? Or can we get the ten-year plan put on a future agenda, that, the Saturday retreat in January or February? Or some, some good timing to update the ten-year plan so that it parallels and matches all of these developments?
Our, our plan, since I became the superintendent, pretty much was at that January retreat, that's when we, every year will, that way, we had some people request that and say, well, somebody wants it in June, somebody wants it this way, we'll always update it in January and that'll be part of the agenda for the January meeting. And I think we kinda agreed that was a good way to go.
So the ten-year plan's gonna become a rolling twelve-month update?
First came out and then we updated it this past January and just say, you know what? Let's just plan on every year we update that in January with the moves.
Thank you.
This would actually be the fourth ten-year plan. That, that, but they, they morph over time and, and, you know, no plan is any better than a year away. So it's about all you can accomplish. One of the things that I did look at, and I looked at options seven and ten, which were not your options, but they did involve a tremendous amount of movement of students. There were four different schools involved in that option. And in talking to Tanya, one of the things she brought up was, you know, that was a lot of movement of children, so. And that's why that option was eliminated. However, there might be some gems inside those options that you might be able to do something with to help with what Ms. Furtinball had brought up and to give you some, some other direction.
I, I think the committee felt really pretty strong about not splitting into four different schools for, for Beverly Hills. And both of those plans split Beverly Hills in multiple directions. It did help with ride times. So when we started talking about that, there were some positives there as far as parent ride time, or parent ride times. Our bus times, as, as Ms. Drys explained multiple times, will be the same, but it's the parent ride times. The other point I want to make about that is across our district, we have many parents that drive much more than two to five minutes. So yes, it'll impact Beverly Hills if we do either one of those two scenarios, but not any more than a lot of our parents are impacted across the district. It is very, I mean, that's what you get when you have a, a close community school and that's part of it that we love. But when you have to move away from those, we do know that that is, that is a piece of that. So many of our schools, even in the Royal Oaks district, drive a large, large way to get to the school, so.
Board members, we've been presented three basic options to look at. And then Ms. Furtinball offered up a hybrid option. Would you prefer that Ms. Reimer look at these three options in the hybrid that was offered up by Ms. Furtinball as the, the way to go forward? And that would actually be four options. Or do you want to eliminate any one of these options? Obviously, there were three in front of you, there was one that did not involve Beverly Hills and then two that did involve Beverly Hills. So if, if you want her to continue to path, go down the path of these three options plus additional, that's fine. I just need to hear your voices on this.
Well, Mr. Chairman, from, I attended one of the sessions to get a feel for the process and whatnot. And I, at that point in time, really felt strongly we needed to have at least one scenario that keeps Beverly Hills. So I'm glad they brought it forward, but from the committee's ranking or rating, I guess, of all the different elements to consider, it obviously did not come out very strongly because it didn't meet the goals. So I guess I, I think we should probably go forward with B and C. And if the hybrid comes out, it's really affecting those two pockets, what I'll call the best of, of those two scenarios.
I really think the public deserves to have input on all three scenarios.
We need to hear from all of the parents before we eliminate scenario.
The, the only thing that I saw, and that was really in relation to option ten, which, oh, actually, option ten and seven both involved Coltrun Web being an inner-city school and trying to put a few more students down there. Yes, it would move some from Beverly Hills. But would that be an option where you wouldn't move them, we wouldn't move them to four schools, but at least three? And look at that, where you might be able to find a way to keep that smaller neighborhood closer into, to Coltrun Web? Because that one took.
So if you, if you look at that, I think we did try that and we were going by Irvin to get to Coltrun with some of the kids from Beverly Hills. That was part of the issue with both seven and ten. And we actually even took four in. So that's the reason why we ended up splitting it more ways so that we didn't go through Irvin's district to get to Coltrun. So we had to send some to Irvin and some to Coltrun and then to Royal Oaks, which ended up splitting it multiple ways.
I don't see that. Looks like actually what you did is you took some from here.
There's a lot of kids, that's absolutely correct. There's a lot of kids in that, in that one section too that put Coltrun Web well over capacity and therefore would limit their program choice seats.
Alright, thank you. Alright, board members, I hear kind of four options. The three that we had before, it's in the hybrid that was suggested. Do you want the committee to continue to look at that? Do I have a, an affirmation?
If we're going to the schools, yes.
Do what?
If we're going out to the schools and presenting this, yes.
Okay. Alright.
Let them see what shakes out and bring it back to us and.
So we, we made your job a little more complex?
You may get an idea out there that's different than any one of these three, that, that's something that we can consider. So I think it's worthwhile.
Let the people speak.
Alright, so, board members, Ms. Reimer is going, I'm just trying to give her direction. And then she will go out to the communities and she will take that back and then refine what she's gonna offer to us in November and then to the public hearing, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
And Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to belabor this, but how will these, these feedback sessions be communicated to each school? How many times will each of these schools get some notice so that most everybody can be aware that they should have come to one event or another? So that the communication's very broad and effective?
We will work with our communications department to do as much as possible, email, connect ads, put stuff in kids' book bags because we can, you know, news, whatever, whatever Ms. Boone can come up with, we'll do it all. Yes, if you'd like to take some notices out, Mr. Harrison, we'll be happy to give them to you.
Can I just make sure, so, but we did add a D, right? So now when we go to the schools, we have A, B, C, and D, correct?
Correct.
And that's what we're taking and what we're ultimately saying is, the final recommendation will be either A, B, C, or D, right?
Uh, no, I think if somebody comes up with an idea that, that, and they convince you that it's worth recommending to us, then.
Right, we're taking four of four, but with the possibility of, hey, well, we like D and can you look at X? That was always the intent, but it was to take three with input, now it's four with input, right?
And one thing to clarify too with our committee and everyone sitting here, we have not done the data for that and the data digs and all that rating for scenario D. So we will, when we pull our committee back together, we will have to do that as well as compare all four against each other. We wanna, when we go to the schools right now, we can, we won't be able to do it for Thursday, I don't think. We may try to intervene there somewhere and get it put in. But date and time-wise, scenario D may look a little different for a while until we get a chance to do that work.
I mean, you've already done the other three, so when the committee comes back together, then really all you have to do is do four and it's very, there's really only one change there. So it should be pretty easy to do that, not a major switch and not that many kids, so.
But we won't have, when we present, if we present the data sheets, we won't have those criteria done based on the committee for option D until we get a chance to get that done.
Well, and Ms. Udi just pointed out that it's really option B with just straightening out Wyancoff. It's really the same thing.
Yes, very similar.
So it's like B two.
B two. We'll call it B two, it's not a lot, we should be able to.
Just very quickly, I want to, again, I went, was in most of the meetings. I just want to, again, thank everybody that was on the committee. It was wonderful. I've been in a lot of redistricting and a lot, been through a lot of it. And again, I thought the, the process we went through was very fair, very professional. And the process we went through, I, I, if you can enjoy something, I think I enjoyed it. And, and I got a lot of good comments. And I think it was good, the people we had involved, because we had our transportation people, we had our people that planned things, and parents, Vince, I hear, see him shaking his head. We had our parents, we had people that, and we had a few tears, we had a laughter, we had, but it was a good process. And, and I think we all learned from it. And I, again, want to thank everyone.
Alright. Alright, board members, we, we're gonna take a fifteen-minute break and let everybody kinda stand up and stretch their legs. And we'll convene at eight o'clock. We'll make it a seventeen-minute break.
We're gonna move up.
We're gonna move up to our. Good evening, we're returning from our recess. Today is October the second and we're restarting the Board of Education Work Session Meeting. I'll bring it back into order. I'd like to start with reports with four point one, oh, we've done four point one and now we're going to four point two, which is the IB information sharing. Dr. Hill, Ms. Shannon Meehan, and Ms. Marie Deal are coming to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Shoemaker, members of the board. We are super excited tonight to have our IB family with us tonight. We have members from all of our IB schools and we're very pleased that Marie Deal will be representing our IB family tonight and presenting our presentation for our report. So Marie, if you'd come forward.
Good evening, everybody. So I became IB coordinator last spring and one of my first tasks was to attend the IB Global Conference with Shannon Meehan. Shannon Meehan is the IB coordinator at J.M. Freez and now at Concord Middle. And I am the IB coordinator now at Concord High School. And I've taught IB for three years, History of the Americas, as well as Theory of Knowledge for the juniors last year. So we went to Orlando and the theme of the IB Global Conference was Inspiring Communities. And one thing we found out when we were there, here's our IB mission statement first, inquiring intercultural, very good global objectives. But we realized when we were there that we were a very lucky school system to have primary years program, which is the elementary school, middle years program, and the diploma program. So we were really fortunate because we found a lot of schools there just had the diploma program. So that was one thing we were grateful for. But in our presentation, we incorporated a lot of teaching strategies to show off to our attendance that this was not gonna just be a speak-to type of presentation. And we wanted to make sure that they could collaborate across the continuum as Cabarrus County Schools had been doing over the past several years. So we wanted to put on display our collaborative projects. And we have, we've mentioned the three circles, so then we handed them out. Everyone collaborated and discussed how they were similar. And everyone had a good idea in terms of what their counties had done. So we shared our ideas from Cabarrus County Schools. And we went through and discussed our primary years program with the exhibition projects done in fifth grade, our middle years projects of the community projects done in eighth grade, as well as our tenth grade personal projects at the high school level and our CAS projects at the high, eleventh and twelfth grade. Our CAS project we highlighted was Nathan Suri, Lucas Plot, several other seniors at Concord High School and how they had networked across the elementary schools, starting a chess club. And we felt like that was a, a very important collaboration. Those students are still carrying those out this year. We had some of our first chess clubs at the elementary schools happen within the last two weeks. It was really neat because you can incorporate the middle years program, the ninth and tenth graders were a part of that chess club organization. So we hope that's gonna continue to be a legacy. Global projects, we've had our NYPD students creating cultural children's stories on storyboard to share with the PYP students. So it's nice to see that collaboration from the middle school to the elementary school. And a lot of what we focused on was reciprocal engagement, that we see our students connecting across the different levels to inspire that IB philosophy. International Day of Peace, NYPD and DP students recreated flags, they shared symbols of peace. And then they ended up exchanging those flags with some music, as well as poetry that were shared at J.M. Freez. So here are pictures of our students sharing their flags. We have a student singing a song. And then Pinwheels for Peace, our PYP, NYPD, students created pinwheels. They assisted each other and they put them on display throughout the schools. They did that again this year. International Peace Day, we did something with that this past week, or September twenty-first. And then they also did Pinwheels for Peace recently too at Weddington Hills. World Poetry Day, PYP students challenged NYPD students to create poems about certain cultural topics. And then they talked about literary devices and it enhanced their global-mindedness. International Mother Language Celebration, students shared stories from their native cultures using their mother tongue languages as learned at home as a child. These stories were interpreted amongst a crowd and they eventually shared those readings online. Those were part of, a lot of our big projects that we've shared across the continuum. And the big part we're heading into this next month, which we've done in the past, are our program choice fairs. And so I know our schools have been heavy planning those coming up in the next week, start kicking off at J.M. Robinson. So that was important to share at the IB Global Conference and how we do that and how we connect across the county. We also shared our summer transition camps and we also discussed the support of the language development from PYP to DP. We also shared how North Carolina is big in our county meetings as well as our regional meetings. And a lot of times at these IB Global Conferences, Florida is huge. So it was neat to share how our state is sharing a lot of our continuum ideas. And lastly, I shared how Wake Forest continually invites high school students for recruitment of IB curriculum graduates. And that was important to share with our, those who came to our conference, or our workshop, excuse me. So finally, to end our little presentation, we shared some things that are going on at our school. So first and foremost, we have Irvin Elementary. So Ms. Yates, our IB coordinator there, she wanted to share that eighty-five percent of our, their staff has received category one. IB training is category one, category two, category three. So they're getting started with their IB foundation. And one hundred percent of their teachers are implementing learner, IB learner profile traits. And one hundred percent of the teachers are designing. And 100% of the teachers are designing PYP units currently. She also emphasized the Spanglish Club that was started through one of our Concord High School CAS projects, which was featured in the IB World Magazine in June, I believe. Weddington Hills, lot of awards here. So increase of student initiated action 108%. Promising practice awards received in 2014, 16, and 17. And they continue to meet and exceed growth utilizing their IB curriculum. Increased the student enrollment by 25%. And IB NYPD, 88% of 5th graders for the last year continued. So they're moving on, and 88% are moving on into the middle years program. And national recognition with their seals there with the School of Distinction from Magnet Schools of America. Concord Middle School, relocation certification coming up. 60% of their teachers are officially IB trained. 80% of teachers participated in the August unit planning. 100% of teachers are implementing learner profile traits. And we've been collaborating currently with this most recent International Peace Day. But they also have weekly enrichment time for students, including IB focus activities and service learning. And they have weekly PLCs that focus on IB unit planning. And one thing we shared in Orlando was that our unit planning is very similar to our understanding by design planning, which the whole county uses. So it was good reciprocal engagement there as well. And then Winkler Middle School, so they're up for NYPD candidacy. Enrollment has increased 15%. Community partnership program has been established. 100% of teachers are implementing learner profiles. 100% of teachers are designing NYPD units. And the IB Win Time focuses on learner profile implementation and global context, and I believe they do that two or three times a week. And finally, Concord High School, where I'm IB coordinator and have taught IB the last three years. We have the Confucius Classroom Grant, which we utilize for our Chinese language program. We have CAS projects throughout Cabarrus County Schools and our community. And we, in the past, we've had two military appointments. And if even our students who do not earn the IB diploma, they have really successful first years in universities and colleges. And so we're working on capturing a lot of those stories to share with the community for recruitment. So I put up here some numbers in our growth, and how we're, throughout the last two years, we've grown. And our IB diploma recipients have increased from 57% to 65%. And then here are subject area growths. We've definitely, this is above international average, so we're definitely growing in our subject area success, and we hope to continue to do so. And then we hope to feature, and I, I'm hoping to capture some of the middle school, or the middle years program and primary years program. I'd like to make this a big community event where we have our big projects on display. But Orlando was great. It was wonderful, inspiring communities theme that I know we're doing here at Cabarrus County Schools. And the IB curriculum is becoming extremely popular. Colleges and universities are really looking heavy at our IB graduates.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any comments or questions for Ms. Deal? I'd like to say that I'm really excited that you guys are really coming together and sharing across all, all levels. It's, it's, it's great to see this program starting to blossom in the way it has. So, board members, I'll turn it over to you. Anyone have a question or a comment? Mr. Walter? Just introduce the group that's behind you.
Sure. I have Shannon Meehan, who is Concord Middle School's IB coordinator. And then her principal, Carrie Tolbert. And Denise Yates, Urban Elementary IB Coordinator. And then Kim Murfit, who's the IB coordinator at Winkler. And Mr. Michael Williams, principal at Winkler Middle School. Mary Hooks, Weddington Hills IB Coordinator. And Principal Chastity, don't, yes, sorry. I was so good telling you all that. Principal at Weddington Hills with all the great awards on our part.
And Tanya Williams, not principal, sorry.
I'm sorry. And Tanya Williams, principal, and then my principal, Dr. Hourback. My assistant principal. Those are all my folks.
Well, thank you all for what you're doing, and we really appreciate it. I know several young people, I got to participate with a lot of your IB students at the Dragon Boat Festival over the last couple of years, and they're a delightful group and a fun group to be around, and I know that they're really working very hard at what they do, so.
Chairman? I was just going to make a note, I know Rob and I went, I don't remember if anybody else was there, but when the sophomore presentations were done at Concord High School and Media Center, those were so exciting. I was like sorry that I couldn't get to everybody, because I kept having these long conversations with folks. But they were so interesting, and to see the commitment at the 10th grade year was incredible, so.
Thank you very much. All right, board members, that brings us to item 4.3. And Mr. Adam Speric is coming up to talk to us about our audit report. You said 4.4?
I wasn't sure which version I was on.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening. My name's Adam Speric. I'm with Anderson Smith-White, the independent auditors engaged to audit the financial statements of Cabarrus County Schools for the year ended June 30, 2017. And in front of you this evening, we're going to go over a couple of, a couple of items that we're presenting to you. One is a letter issued to the board. As the entity that actually hires us to do the audit, this letter is to inform you of any issues that we may have encountered, or any problems we may have encountered, or any differences that we noted that don't normally fit in the context of the financial statements. Again, just a standard letter to let you know how the audit went, and to let you know that we had no problems in conducting that audit. It went according to plan, and we had no, no adjustments and no uncorrected adjustments in conducting that audit. So that's the first part of the, let's see, page down. The, the first three pages of the presentation, again, are that letter addressed to the board. The second letter in the presentation here is an actual excerpt from the financial statements. This is the actual opinion letter. This is the page 1 and 2 of the financial statements. The most important paragraph in this letter is the opinion paragraph that starts at the bottom of page 1 that states, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above fairly, in all mature respects, represent the financial position and the activities for the school system for the year ended June 30, 2017." So essentially, this is what's considered a clean, unmodified opinion letter, that we believe that these financial statements are accurate. After the letters, we've got some data points here, just to show you in a, in a graph form and table form. First of all, we have the cash on hand for the, what's considered the local funds, the general fund, and the other special revenue fund. And you can see the increase in cash in the current year to over 17 and a half million dollars. The increase in cash is noted as due to a timing of receipts on receivables. There was outstanding receivables last year that brought cash down. So while those funds combined nearly broke even, your cash went up over half a million dollars. So that's what this, again, this graph shows you, the cash balance shows an uptick in cash, but that is just related to the timing of receivables and not cash generated by operations. What's that? Yeah, we'll, we'll get to the actual data table, which is behind the graphs that show the actual numbers. And then there's also, these numbers are the audited numbers directly from the financial statements that were submitted to the LGC last week and actually approved today. They've not been put in front of you, because they were just approved today, and they'll be up for review. Load them in the morning, so. The next graph shows the actual fund balances for the general fund and other special revenue fund. The total fund balance, again, I said the, between the general fund and the other special revenue fund, essentially you broke even. And you can see that in the dark blue, total fund balance remained very consistent. The only thing that changed is the amount that was available for appropriation. And again, that increased because of that same receivable. When, when cash is in a receivable format, you can't budget it, budget it. So fund balance remained consistent, and available fund balance for appropriation increased because you collected that receivable during this 2017 fiscal year. This shows the revenues and expenditures, again, for the general fund and other special revenue fund. And again, back to the point of breaking even between those two funds, you literally, it was like a $33,000 change in fund balance. So you can see revenues almost exactly equal expenses, and they totaled over $70 million this year. Those graphs were derived from the data followed behind. And you can see, again, cash on hand, 17.7 million. Total fund balance, 16.6 million of that, 7.4 million is unassigned. $8 million is assigned for next year's, the 1718 budget, and for special purposes. You have some fund balance that's not spendable, in the form of prepaid and inventories. And it also restricted, is the amount that is restricted because of state statute. Again, the difference, the change from last year of 1.5 million to 261,000, again, is the collection of that receivable. So again, a receivable that's outstanding a year ago, collected during this year, resulted in the decrease in the restricted fund balance. You can see the revenues and expenditures below that. 71 million of revenues, or almost 72 million, and just over 72 million of expenditures for a net change in fund balance of just $33,000 compared to a use of fund balance of 1.6 million from the year before. Are there any questions on the general fund and the other special revenue fund? Again, these are, these are considered your local funds. The state and federal funding sources, those revenues do not generate fund balance. You spend it or lose it, but your local fund is really where you manage fund balance for future years and appropriate fund balance in future years if needed. So again, these, those are presented here, and again, part of the most important numbers in the financial statements. One of your other funds, Capital Outlay Fund. While your Capital Outlay Fund only had $38,000 of fund balance at the beginning of the year, and 103,000 at the end of the year, you siphoned 51 and a half million dollars through that fund for construction. This just shows you the large dollars that goes, that goes through that fund. But again, most of that is county appropriation and bond proceeds for construction and property acquisition. The other fund that we typically go over when we look at financial statements, your main business fund. You have governmental funds, which are your state, federal, and local funds. And then you have your business funds, which are childcare and school, school food service funds. And presented here is some data, cash, revenues, and expenses, and net income for the last three years. And you can see cash remains consistent, and you are right at about two and a half to three months of cash on hand. Federal guidelines require you to operate your child nutrition fund within one to three months of cash on hand. You're sitting at just over $4 million, and that ends up being right around 2.6 to three months, depending on what month you look at as far as cash on hand. Total revenues and expenses through that fund, over $14 million. It's up a little bit from last year. And that fund as well, over the last three years, essentially breaks even. The idea there is if you are close to that three month, you want your school food service to break even or use a little bit of its cash on hand, that means it's paying for all of the services that it utilizes through the, charging of indirect cost. So when your child nutrition department or food service department is healthy enough to pay all of its indirect costs, it ends up being an asset to the school system, the general fund, as well as its own fund in that it can acquire its own property, pay for its own equipment, and things like that. So again, having a, having a healthy fund balance and a healthy cash level in your food service fund is a, is a good thing. Any questions? The school food service funds have experienced a lot of fluctuation, depending on size of districts, and also whether you qualify for the CEP program. That program allows for districts that have been struggling in the past to make a lot more money, especially if you were in areas hit by Hurricane Matthew. You got a bump up in the amount of federal dollars you were going to get for every meal that you basically put in front of the kids. So we're seeing a lot of fluctuation in child nutrition this year, but with, without a doubt, the, the trend is decreased participation but increased federal reimbursement. So you get more dollars per plate for every plate you serve. And Cabarrus County is actually one of the unique counties in that your growth helps fuel increased, increases in participation. So your revenues and expenses continue to grow despite being, you know, not qualifying totally for that CEP program. So to answer your question, the, we see a wide range of healthy and unhealthy child nutrition funds. But you're definitely in one of the upper tiers as far as, you know, your, your fund balance goes and your solvency within that fund, especially with them able to pay, again, that indirect cost, which is to pay for their share of their overhead to cover, you know, the, the cost that they don't have to pay directly, that they benefit from, like having a finance officer or having a superintendent. So being able to pay those indirect costs, again, it's a, a good funding source for the school system.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. Child nutrition is not included in here as another enterprise account? And not child nutrition, I'm sorry, Kids Plus, Kids Plus.
Yeah.
It doesn't?
Yeah, it's, it is not presented here, but it is in the financial statements. It is one of your enterprise funds, and for-
It's just not called out in separate detail like school nutrition program?
That's right, not, not for this presentation.
Okay.
It, it will be a part of the combined financial statements. The child nutrition, or the childcare fund collects 3.4 million dollars of fees every year and spends 3.4 million dollars, at least for this year. So the change in fund balance for that fund was $23,000. They operate with a fund balance of right around 200,000. So while it has a small fund balance, it's spending all of the revenues it's collecting in a current year, and it also pays an indirect cost of about 320,000 to cover its part of the overhead.
Just to, if you'll educate me here, I know your date here is always June 30th of each year.
Right.
But do these numbers include the summer food programs we have for communities? Is it a full 12-month picture of expenditures?
Yeah.
Not just the school year itself, but in the summer months as well?
Yeah, the, the year end is June 30, but the fiscal year is the entire year. So when you're looking at revenues and expenses- So, when you're looking at revenues and expenses, you're seeing the entire fiscal year of revenue and expenses and includes that summer program. And your summer feeding, federal reimbursements.
We already know it's good.
Okay. It was 154,000 dollars worth of summer revenues, again, federal reimbursements for serving summer meals and it's, you know, a part of any school system's child nutrition program. The ones that operate in those summer months and can have revenues in those summer months, those are high profit meals and so it definitely adds to the, the financial strength of the, of the program. It might be a lot of work, but it does pay off.
Any other questions?
I have one question, Adam. We see that the net, net change in assets at the end, just before, at the bottom of that report, we're always in the negative. Is that a bad thing, good thing, or, you know, because over the last three years we've been there, where will we get an infusion of cash if this program needs it?
That was part of having a cash balance of four and a half million dollars is you're getting close to having that three months of, it, it's essentially cash. It's, they call it operating, it's working capital. You take cash minus liabilities, but, so, having four and a half million dollars of cash puts you really close to having three months of cash on hand. And once you hit that three month, if you end the year or end the December 31 period with over three months of cash, you have to develop a spend down plan. So, you want to try to operate in that two and a half to three months of cash on hand because this year you actually were able to, during the year, reach the three-month threshold of three months of cash on hand and it allowed you to apply for a waiver to not have to raise prices on meals by 10% and got you out of having the general fund pay child nutrition if you did not raise lunch prices by 10 cents. The federal government has a, what's called a equity tool, a price equity tool, where you're supposed to eventually raise your meal prices, the paid lunch price, to about the cost or the amount that's reimbursed at the federal rate of, and now it's at almost $3.15. So, over the next foreseeable future, you, you do this price equity tool and it'll tell you that you have to raise prices at least 10 cents a year until you get to $3.15 per meal. But if you have enough cash on hand already, then you don't have to increase prices. So, in an ideal world, again, operating between that two and three, two and a half and three month operating cash on hand while being able to reach three months somewhere during that operation year allows you to apply for a waiver, not have to raise meal prices unless you want to and not have to pay the fee from local to child nutrition for not raising prices.
That's all about plan. This didn't happen by accident. We're, Dr. Probst and her staff are continuously monitoring the cash balance for the child nutrition program, the school nutrition program. And as we're climbing into nearly three months of operating cash balance, we devised a plan. So, one, we knew that there were going to be salary increases that were significant over the last couple of years. When you put a thousand dollars on a, a lower paid staff, it's going to eat at your profits. So, we knew those kind of things. We also knew that we were kind of close last year and if we continued to get close this year, then we would be able to apply for the waiver and we knew that the board, you know, favors not raising prices. So, this was all a devised plan and so while it looks like we're eating away at our fund balance, we are, but it's in the plan and we're doing what's best for the district.
The fund balance of the child nutrition fund is also unique compared to the governmental funds because it actually includes fixed assets. Governmental fixed assets, they get added and you can look at debt position separate from fund balance. So, you see here at the bottom, it actually says change in net assets, not necessarily change in fund balance. It says net assets because it includes liabilities like the pension liability that will never be paid. It includes your fixed assets that are depreciated over the years. So, you see, you actually decrease net assets, 120,000, 138,000, 74,000, but your cash balance actually went up from 15 to 16 to six million or 4 million, 650, then down to 4 million, 556. So, while you're losing net assets or net position, you're not losing cash. And that's just because you're depreciating assets, a non-cash expense, you're recognizing pension expense, a non-cash expense, and your child nutrition department or fund benefits anytime you build a new school and it gets free assets in the form of a brand-new kitchen. So, this year, you'll see contributed capital in the financial statements of 450,000. Those are assets, some of them are non-capitalized, like trays and cooking utensils or whatever, and then some are capitalized, but those capitalized assets add to the net position and then get depreciated over time. Again, all non-cash, the child nutrition department didn't have to spend a dime for it. So, while net assets has been decreasing, your cash balance has really been staying steady and if not increased one year. Yep.
Other questions?
Help me understand, maybe this is a question for staff. Your free and reduced lunch percentages at the bottom of page 12 here decreases the financial picture of free and reduced lunch, but in my mind, I think of our student population who are free and reduced lunch as increasing. Are they separate, is this the same thing?
Yes.
So, our free and reduced lunch population is 39.8.
Okay.
Okay. So, I mean, this is the real number here. It's not, it's not financial versus head count of students.
With full of child nutrition website.
Okay.
That's good.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Adam.
All right.
Appreciate it.
So, we went over, again, local funding sources, your child nutrition department, but here, this gives you an idea of kind of where your funding comes from. Your local expenditures in dark blue, again, we spend a lot of time on it because that actually generates your fund balance, but you can see the majority of your funding, nearly 180 million dollars comes from state. Your capital projects in light blue, that fluctuates. Again, that's just the timing of construction projects. And then the smallest funding source, your federal programs there at the bottom provide very, very little total funding when you look at the unit as a whole. So, that's how your funding sources match up and you can see that total expenditures increased, but in a district where you have growing ADM, we also kind of look at it as a per pupil to give you a better idea of spending on a per pupil basis. And again, these two both increase, so while increasing total expenditures, you're also increasing per pupil expenditures. And those numbers are followed there. 72 million dollars of local, 173 million dollars of state, 11 million dollars of federal. It equates to just over $8,000 per pupil compared to 7,700 dollars last year. But again, if you really want to look at your per pupil expenditures, I would exclude capital outlay because again, there's fluctuations there. So, when you look at them separately, you can see local goes from 2195 to 2260. Your state funding from 5,200 to just over 5,400 and then federal actually went down a little bit. So, when you're looking at per pupil expenditures, typically you're going to want to exclude capital outlay, especially on years where you're building new, new, new schools. And finally, not only are we here to do a financial statement audit, we look at your compliance with federal and state regulations for your major programs. This year, we audited the state public school fund, which has to be audited every year, again, as your main funding source. The state fund is made up of, the state public school fund as well as other programs. Some of those other programs in that state funding are your technology plan, your VOC ed plan, program. Both of those were audited as major this year as well. And then on the federal, we audited child nutrition and Title I as your two major federal programs. And we found no findings, whether it be regarding internal controls or question costs, meaning dollars spent not in accordance with those federal requirements or state requirements. So, any questions at all?
All right. Board members, are there any other questions? All right.
Well, thank you very much, Adam.
Yep, I appreciate it.
Great report.
And again, we'll continue writing your comprehensive annual financial report, which is the financial statements that were reviewed and approved by the LGC with a bunch of county data added on and those two eventually will be presented on the website. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That carries us to item 5.1 and that is policy 4400. It's, it's out for the first reading. Ms. Reimer is here to talk about it and Ms. Burns.
And your psychic. Oh, my psychic, yes. So, we have under policy, first read, policy 4400 is attendance. This is a district recommended revision to align the policy with the district practices around early release and early dismissal documentation. We did have a board submission for a slight change to that policy. We sent that to Mr. Shaw to see administration is, is good with the change and we just defer to attorney if that doesn't change the meaning of the policy, we're great with the change and we'll add that for second reading. Basically just adds with consideration to loss of education, educational time as described in section E, so we're referencing section E.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, what is the change? What's our practice?
Sir?
Explain what our practice is.
So, a tardy to school or an early checkout is considered a tardy and how Power School records that. We wanted to make sure we were being consistent with how we're actually practicing so that the language is changed to say tardy is when I'm late to school or if I'm early to check out of school.
And it was not the practice before?
It was the practice. It just wasn't written that way in our policy.
Other questions about this one? Consent? All right. Consent agenda? It takes us to 5.2 and that's 4150, second reading.
In 4150, Mr. Walters asked for an exception to be added to that. The board agreed with that in our last meeting and so we had our attorneys draft that change. It's on page five of your policy if you'd like to look at that, but that is the change from the attorneys.
Better than what?
All right. Consent? All right.
We also have the minor edits that come in. There's quite a few of those, obviously. And these are, Ms. Burns can probably explain them. They're just minor edits, edits that came directly from the state. They are mandatory required changes. Yeah, go ahead.
All right. The State Board of Ed changed their policy manual and how they coded everything, which meant that every time we cited the State Board of Ed policy manual, we have to change that. So, they sent us back, I think it's about 52 policies and all that's changed is the reference at the very end.
That's it?
That's it.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. That carries us to, that was 5.3 that we just did the consent on. And so now we're going into item six, which is the budget amendment by Ms. Klutz.
Okay. I have several budget amendments for you this afternoon or this evening. We'll start with the first one being our state budget amendment that's before you. I'll hit the highlights and if you have questions on anything, just feel free to ask. So, the first one is just the normal reimbursement for substitute pay that we get from the state. The second one, again, just a normal funds and forfeitures allocation that we get from the state periodically. The third one is a allocation for 3D devices from the state and those are basically for iPads for the M-class reading 3D. Then we'll go into a reclass. We're moving some funds. So, what we had to do there was we were looking to pay for a transportation contract for a parent of a preschool child or multiple preschool children and you can't pay that out of state, but I have some Fund VIII funds that I can pay it out of and so it was just really a switch so that we could be compliant with what you can pay where. If you look in Fund VIII, you'll see the flip side of that entry. So, it's just moving things around so that we're compliant.
How many buses and drivers is that?
It's actually not. What we're doing are paying parents to drive their children to school when there's maybe, we don't want to, we don't want to have two or three preschoolers on a bus. It's more economical to pay a parent the mileage and handle it that way. And so, we try to do that when we can. The, you're seeing a reclass of funds for read to achieve funds and so it's really difficult to project the budget for transportation when you're doing this, this summer school campus. You don't know where the children are, but at the minute that we realize there's additional funds, we move that and we were able to buy instructional supplies and that type of thing for the students. You also see an increase to our state allotment for connectivity that's related to our E-rate. It's 400, over $400,000 and that'll help with our infrastructure, through our technology. You're seeing a reduction for the Adobe certifications and that's just something that the state buys and we pay our portion of it and it's just a more economical way to do that for us. Then you see the, the bus driver salary increase that we talked about last, last month, 453,000 dollars from the state to help us with that pay increase that the board adopted that plan. And then you see a reclass of VAF from regular ed to VAF and it's just because we adopted the budget in August, 1st of August. School starts at the end of August and we don't have all of our teachers in place and all our VAF, so we're just moving that around. Then you'll have, the last one on state is a reduction for our PRCO 29, which is behavior support. We're encouraged to ask for more than what we know that we'll get, but we still try. And so, this is the adjustment for, we didn't get it, but we tried. So, okay, so that's state. Local, there's just a reclass of the telephone expense for the early college and then the, the final entry there is where we carried over some dollars in our facilities and our grounds. Those, those dollars just carry over 31,000 for facilities, $20,000 is a very small amount. I'd commend Chuck and his staff for managing those funds very well. That's less than 1% of the allocation and so they've done a good job at that. There, look, the move. So, federal, we're just doing a small reclass from parent involvement to subpay. And then capital, so we're increasing about 68 million dollars and so that, those are the projects that we've been talking about with the county. The county is supported and we do phases of funding. You can see where the, we've, we're allocating funds for Royal Oaks, the PLC, the new high school and the new elementary school and those are all in the lobs or the debt issue that the county has issued. And so, there's, there's funding phases. Then the last one is a reclass. So, we finished up our roofs that the, the county funded in the previous year. The additional money, we asked the county, could we use it to, to buy two more mobile units to place out at Patriots? They agreed to do that and there's also a sewer easement that we're going to have to place out at Cox Mill Elementary. to place out at Cox Mill Elementary.
Are we called up on roofs?
All right, no, no, heavens, no. No, we have a lot more roofs to do, but $147,000, you can't do a roof for $147,000. So, you're looking at, you know, half a million for a roof, and so we just, we moved it out for, for current needs, and I was looking for Tim. Oh, there he is. Okay.
What was the sewer easement at Cox Mill Elementary? What has to be done there?
I'm going to ask Tim to come up and talk about that.
When we built Cox Mill Elementary School, there was no sewer in the area. We had to build it in a pump station at the back of the school and come up to the road and run about two miles down the road to Clark Creek to tie back in the sewer. And then we used DNC DOT right-of-way as our, you know, encroached upon the right-of-way to allow us to do that. Now, two developers have come in, have to widen the road, add turn lanes, widen the pavement, and NC DOT, he does not want that force main to be under the pavement. So, what they're saying is we have to relocate it because we're encroached upon the right-of-way. And one time, we got to relocate almost 2,000 feet of that right-of-way, that force main within the right-of-way, the cost of almost a hundred and some thousand dollars. I said, you know, we're not going to do that. So, we went back to the developer, said, you know, we're not in a hurry to move it. It's not causing us any problem. It's your problem. You help us out here. So, he came back and found us a solution where he was going to extend his sewer line up within his development and then allow us to only relocate about 600 and some feet of the force main and tie into a manhole that would go back through his development, thus abandoning the remaining portion, three some, 3,000 and some feet of that force main. So, the cost dropped down to, you know, $25,000. But it's something that we're required to do because DOT does not wish for us to have the force main.
So, are we, are we removing any of our future maintenance by doing that?
Yeah, I mean, it shortens our force main significantly, almost by, you know, 3,000 feet of force main, yes. I mean, it'd be nice to have it on gravity completely, but because of the swamp area in Clark Creek, we just can't get gravity up that far to be able to run it directly at gravity, so we'll always have to have a pump station.
Okay. So, we're going to be seeing a contract or whatever for that? Some kind of agreement?
The developer will send us an agreement we have to sign, basically, developer will do it on our behalf, and we'll have to just pay him for, for that cost somehow.
It won't be anything that comes to the board. It's under the threshold.
Okay. But I mean, but there will be some formal agreement, not a gentleman's answer? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. The final budget amendment was the special fund. We see where there's a couple of grants being allocated there, so we have carryovers funds from four foundation grants that goes to Patriots Elementary. Then we have some carryovers of the Confucius Grant, carryover for NC pre-K, and that just, when we, when we adopt the budget early is great for a lot of reasons, but that's why you're seeing the carryovers, because the carryovers weren't done until the audit was finished kind of thing. So, it's just timing. We also got a couple of additional slots and pre-Ks, so you're seeing that $35,000 being allocated there. Record that High Point University grant, that's AP interns, what that grant is for. Then you're seeing the flip side of the, the entry for the EC transportation that we saw on the state side. And then finally, this is the, the EC local side, so the state provided most of that money. We have to pay for the EC monitors, remember? The salary increase for that. Remember? You should simply ask about this. This is the budget that takes care of those EC monitors. You get one coming out of EC funds, right? So, that's, this is it. Okay. Other questions?
All right, board members, action agenda?
Consent? Can it be consented?
Yeah, it can be consent, but usually everyone wants to vote on. All right, consent. That moves us on to item seven dot one, which is the at-risk after, after-school supper program. And Ms. Baker's coming up, and we need to take action on this tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct. Before it uses information about the at-school supper program that we are wanting to policy at Rocky River Elementary School.
It's an opportunity to work with Adrienne Perry to help with her after-school tutoring that she's going to be doing twice a week. Gives us an opportunity to service those children with an evening meal. It's not going to be a traditional meal of what you would think that you would have at the house with your family. However, it is going to be a heavier snack that's going to sustain those children from when they maybe they've had lunch earlier in the day. We've also had an opportunity to survey some students, survey some of the families from Kids Plus, and we have some buy-in there. So, we're hoping to not just do this program two days a week, but hopefully offer it five days a week for all of those families that are involved. The after-school meal program is part of the CACFP program. In order for us to apply for this program, we have to have at least 50% of our students must be identified as free and reduced, which Rocky River does participate and meet those guidelines. The meal that we're going to, there's a lot of opportunities with this, because if this works well here, we have some other schools that we can take that opportunity on as well. Because not only does it look at after-school enrichment programs that you would say for tutoring, but it also can look at schools that have organized sports, because that is part of the curriculum as well. And schools that may not meet 50%, such as a high school, we can look at the feeder schools going into that. So, it gives us an opportunity to apply for some schools on down the road and to provide more wraparound services and just really help our community and our families. With this program, we feel like it's a great opportunity to support our community and its families. And then, one of the things that we're looking at doing, as the auditor was mentioning early, are about having the extra income minus expenses. It allows us to put programs, funds back into our program, buy new equipment, and then our biggest thing that we were able to do this year, again, was not to raise school meal prices. So, we're hoping that all of these items work together. That's going to allow us to do this for another, another school year, which we won't know at this point in time. But again, this is just some other opportunities that we're, we're looking at, meeting our families, also put back into our program, and then, again, not raise meal prices for next school year. That would be another ultimate goal of ours. Do you guys have any questions?
What is the downside of, we just saw in the previous slides from Mr. Shaperek about the fact that our free and reduced lunch population is actually starting to decrease, and, you know, it's decreased over 3% over the last couple of years? Is that, as we get into this program, will we begin to, as that decreases, it'll also have some impact on the schools that are 50% and above?
It could. Again, we're just having, we're, by October 12th of this year, we will be past our, our first 30 days of school. Where status is carryover, we're hoping parents are getting those applications in, we're directly certifying students. So, after October 12th, we'll have a good radar to see where we're going to end up by the, you know, where we're, where we're tasking this year. We did see a decline in our overall free and reduced percentages last year. The economy's doing well, and that's, that's a good thing for our families. So, that is something we will have to monitor. However, just looking historically at Rocky River, they've had strong numbers, so we do have some wiggle room for this year.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison?
Maybe two questions. Is the evening meal provided within the normal Kids Plus hours?
Yes. What we would do, if this program is approved by you guys tonight, we would probably service the, on Tuesdays and Thursdays when we have both groups present, we would probably do one group at four o'clock. Ms. Perry wants her students for the tutoring program to be fed at 4:30, and then they're actually able to get on the bus and go home so that we don't have an influx, and we can truly take care of both groups.
And, and so we're providing transportation. If they need meals, they obviously need transportation as well, so we're getting them back home as well, but we're coordinating transportation services for that population as well?
For, for this, the tutoring program, that would be with Ms. Perry. She could answer that.
For the child nutrition.
So, I can, you know, some of you asked about the restart schools and what we were doing. So, one of Adrienne's plan with restart is to add tutoring in the afternoon for a certain group of students. So, one thing we're doing at Rocky River that's different this year is this, so it's part of her plan on what's something different that we can do if we repurpose some money. And as part of repurposing that money and tutoring a group of students after school, then, you know, she certainly talked with and dawned, quickly worked on, is it possible to provide them an evening meal? So, it's something that we really wanted to see somebody try, and so kind of kudos to Ms. Perry for, one, trying to figure out how to serve the students better, and also to child nutrition for figuring out a way to make that work and hopefully pile it and use it other places. So, yes, part of what the money that she's repurposed is to provide transportation for those students, and added benefit of that is an evening meal. So, I'm, I'm really proud of both the school nutrition and Rocky River for doing something different, and again, trying to help their students.
Ms. Perry has a tremendous heart.
Go ahead, Ms. Carpenter.
Well, I like the second part when you said, and we may not have to raise prices on lunches. They know that that's one of the big things I like to hear, because I don't like to raise prices on lunches. So, I, I would like to see that happen, where we don't have to raise prices. But thank you for your efforts there, and this sounds like a...
So, does that mean you're going to make the motion?
I'll make the motion, and, and there, I got you a second. How about that?
All right. Is there any more discussion on this program?
Just a quick, why are we voting on this today and not next week?
In order to get the application, the 53-page application, I've got to get it submitted so that we're not delaying the supper, the supper meal program. We cannot start the program until October to today because of new funding. So, this is why we need to get, we need to get, get this program expedited so we can start servicing the children.
Okay, so we're planning on starting the services when? Tomorrow or?
Hopefully, as soon as we get this done and get everything uploaded into the system, we have been given the green light. I'd like to get this started within the next two weeks, at least by next week if at all possible. Yes.
Is the funding a quarter?
No, the funding is monthly. Actually, this started the new fiscal year for this, this group of, this plot of money.
Okay. All right, board members, any more comments, questions? Let's vote. All in favor of the motion to let this after-school program at Rocky River be approved? Say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. That motion carries six zero, and we now move on. Thank you, Dawn. Appreciate it. All right. That takes us to the board member attendance at the NCSBA Annual Conference. Board members. Ms. Monroe, when do you need this by?
If you could do it tonight, I can start to pay at work. I'm sure everything gets paid at that.
All right. And if we do it by next Monday, are, are, who's, who's willing to commit to going to the conference? You need to know the actual dates that each person's going? Okay. Board members, do you each have dates that you're willing to attend?
I think I'd like to attend the four, on the 14th, I would not be spending the night, just going, going up in the morning, coming back at night.
The 14th?
Yes.
Mr. Walters, 11:14 one day. Mr. Powell, are you interested? Okay. Ms. Carpenter?
Now, when it says full conference, is that doing that Sunday, or is that just Monday? Okay, well, I'm, I'm doing the full conference. I'm not doing Sunday.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter is doing everything but Sunday, which was a, I just, I just deleted everything, so I have to get it back. Hold on. All right, so you're going to do the 13th, 14th? Are you going to do the 15th as well? Just the 13th and 14th? Okay.
No, I'm doing Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. I mean, I'll spend the nights Monday and Tuesday.
Yeah. Two nights.
But we're there Wednesday morning.
All right. Ms. Furtenbaugh?
Ms. Monroe has my dates.
Okay.
For not to advertise.
All right. Mr. Harrison?
And Ms. Monroe has my dates, and I'm not, or I'm leaving Tuesday and not attending the Wednesday session, and I'm not sure what Mr. Fur's intentions are.
Have you heard from Mr. Fur?
No.
Okay. Would it be, can I type it, can I put him in for a date, and then it'll be less than, and that would be fine? I'll get with him tonight, tomorrow and find out. All right, so we'll get with Mr. Fur, and I'll probably be going up for the first day, and that will be it. So, I'll be going up Monday. All right. Is there a motion, board members, that Tim Fur, Rob Walter, Carolyn Carpenter, Cindy Furtenbaugh, David Harrison, Barry Shoemaker attend the NCSBA Annual Conference? Mr. Harrison makes the motion. Rob Walter seconds that. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. That motion carries six zero. And now, we need to vote for delegates. We need four delegates, if I'm not mistaken.
It's going to be Monday.
It's on Tuesday, isn't it?
It's Monday, the 13th.
Monday, the 13th.
Delegate Assembly's at 3:00 P.M.
Yeah, 3:00, 3:30. Yeah, delegates, Assembly 3:30 to 4:00. Yeah, 3:30 to 4:00 it looks like.
Yeah, something like that. All right, so who would like to be a delegate?
I would.
Cindy, Carolyn, David, and I'll be there. Rob, did you want to be a delegate? Or you were the, you were the Tuesday. Yeah, so you're going to be, okay. So, I'll be a delegate. Mr. Fur is not here to speak. All right, so your delegates would be Ms. Furtenbaugh, Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Harrison, and myself. Is there a motion to support the four of us as delegates?
Second.
Rob Walter and David Harrison. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, so we've taken care of our delegates, and our last is a...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to make a note, when we went to District Six, NCSBA gave out awards to full boards, and that was new since the last time I served, the Silver Bell, whatnot. They used to give them out at the annual conference at Greensboro, and I, I knew what those criteria were. Basically, every board member met their 12 hours of training in a year. Now that the legislation has changed for two years, and NCSBA has changed the award structure, I just emailed NCSBA and copied our chairman today. Don't have an answer yet, but just to find out what is required for us to be recognized in that way, because I think it's a great show that we're taking the time to learn more about our service and what may help our district or hurt us as far as legal issues or whatever the topics may be. So, I'll share that once I get a response. But since it's a cycle of two years, you know, is it a rolling two years from your election date? Is it two years for the whole board is the same? I don't know, so I just want to get those answers. Eileen, do you know?
Yes, I believe that the requirement for that, because your District Six meeting is once a year, it is still NCSBA's requirement that each board member would attain 12 hours per year.
Per year, okay.
And it must be all board members.
Well, since we're speaking on that, there is some required training we need to do this month, is it not? When would that occur?
Some required training this month?
The ethics.
Didn't we have the ethics thing that was supposed to be done within a year?
Yeah, we do need to have ethics.
So, that would have to be done this month? And we had talked about having our in-house counsel provide that to us? Is that still an option?
That's an option.
Yeah, there's also, NCSBA has a remote webinar, which they said they would schedule for us if we wanted to pick a date first. So, depending on how flexible the, the attorneys can be, that may be an inexpensive way just to do it in a conference room here, perhaps, to do the online one or the teleconference one.
I want to get stuff.
Right. So, anyways, I personally would like to have our board recognized. We always had a great deal of pride in that, that we collectively, so I would encourage everyone to, to look at their opportunities to get the 12 hours, if that's what it is for Ms. Monroe, to get the 12 hours each year.
All right, I'll do some research on the ethics training and call. Do y'all have some dates? Keep, get some dates in your head, because we'll have to, we'll have to decide when we want to do this, probably toward the end of the month.
I know that some of y'all are going to be, I know, well, we've got the, I know the Ashwells coming up.
Yeah, but that's not the... Yeah, but that's not the, after that, it's a break until the end, so there'll be a couple of weeks there. All right, Gary, those two are our final ones. Eight dot one, which is the Cabarrus Health Alliance Partnership. And Ms. Shepherd is coming forward. And Mr. Basilese is coming forward. And I don't know who your guest is with you.
Good evening. Hi, I am Kim Reagan. I am the Program Director for School Health and School Engagement with the Cabarrus Health Alliance. Under that umbrella falls our TRAIL program. And so with me is Barbara Shepherd, who is the Director of that program. And so we appreciate the opportunity today to be able to answer some of your questions and concerns regarding the program that we've, the surveying that's been going on so far this school year. I have to say that we have a longstanding history, Cabarrus Health Alliance, working collaboratively with Cabarrus County Schools. And we strive to provide quality programming and services for your students and staff and hope to contribute to your goals of increasing student attendance, increased test scores, and increased graduation rates. That partnership is very important to us. And that's why as soon as we heard that we had the first parents calling with concerns about the survey, that I reached out to Ms. Reimer and Mr. Basilese's office and asked what we can do to help to mitigate those concerns. And then later, when our Health Director, Dr. Pilkington, was working with Dr. Louder and we chose to suspend any of that, of those surveys for right now. So we have put together a packet of information for you about our TRAIL program and the components. We've answered the 16 questions that Mr. Schumaker submitted to us. We sent those to you electronically and we hope that you had an opportunity to be able to review those. But we've also brought a hard copy for you. And I'd like to ask Ms. Shepherd if she can just do a quick inventory for you of what's included in that packet before we answer any of other questions that you may have.
That sounds great. And as she said, my name is Barbara Shepherd. I oversee a variety of health and community initiatives at the Cabarrus Health Alliance and TRAIL falls under my area of supervision. So on the right side of your packet, you have the questions that Chairman Schumaker actually gave to us ahead of time to try to explain in more detail what the TRAIL project was and also some of the questions that you may have had concerns. On the right side, I think one of the things he really wanted us to be able to communicate is just the comprehensive nature and the multi-tiered approach that TRAIL does take. There was a lot of research that went into this and developing it. And one of the things we really tried to do is make sure that we found those common goals with Cabarrus County Schools. Some of the things that Kim mentioned again is academic performance, dropout rates, and you're going to have some additional information in your packet for that. So with TRAIL, you'll see the first puzzle piece that talks about all the different components of TRAIL. Behind that, you'll see TRAIL Impact, which is just this past school year. So this would just be for those ninth graders that we have been able to interact in the schools that we have been able to interface with as well. As some of you know, TRAIL has been around since 2001. Mostly Cabarrus County Schools has served as a control site, but we have been in Kannapolis City doing a lot of programming as well. And we did have Jan Freez during that time that was a low dosage school as well. Behind that, you will have a TRAIL program overview, which really talks to the comprehensive nature and the multi-passed approach, as I said earlier, which is universal strategies, targeted and intensive strategies, a little bit about the history of TRAIL, and then some of our goals and objectives that we do try to address. As noted, this is a teen pregnancy prevention program, but one of the things that we try to do differently, we really try to take in consideration the years of programming that we have done and really try to pick those best practices and those things that we have found to be effective, which really feeds into those common goals that we have with Cabarrus County Schools, which is the last part that you have, which is talks about the TRAIL components that support academic success measures. So I know this is a lot of information, which is why we wanted to get it to you ahead of time, but we absolutely last answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Board members, the 16 questions that were provided for answers were based on emails that I had received and so I just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to look through these and, that they had an opportunity to respond to these and try to give us some background because I know we didn't really have a lot of understanding and I wanted to make sure each of you had that. So with that, I will open up the floor to questions and I see Mr. Powell is mic'd up. Mr. Powell?
Okay. Yes, thank you, Ms. Shepherd and Ms. Reagan. I don't think I've seen you guys since I was fussing at the county commissioners to keep the school nursing program funding when O'Stryke was on the board. I don't know if you remember that, but I was one of the vocal ones there. But thank you for coming to speak with us. And my first question is, you know, I haven't heard Dr. Louder's take on why the survey was canceled or any of the discussions that happened with him. So I just kind of, before I have another question, just see what Dr. Louder's thoughts are.
So I think the statement that was released was accurate, which is that Mr. Pilkington, Dr. Pilkington called me and discussed kind of the impact that he thought the survey had and the two of us decided that we thought maybe pulling the survey now was the best way to move forward.
Okay. So my question is, my next question is, you know, this whole thing was about the sexual habit survey, I think section three of the survey that was sent out. What was the vetting process for those survey questions from the school district? That would be from the school district. I know that Cabarrus Health Alliance has not worked for Cabarrus County Schools, but from the school district, what was the vetting process before we put it in front of our students?
Sure. So it's my understanding that that survey has been run in some version since 2001 for the last 16 years. So I did review the items prior to the implementation of the survey for this year. And it's my understanding that those items were consistent with the questions that we've been asking for the last 16 years. So since there were not what I saw as new items emerging in that survey, we continued with the process that we'd had previously.
So it's my understanding that this is the first time that it was administered to 12-year-olds or eighth graders? Is that correct? Or 12-year, the survey item, I guess since 2001, has an age there of 12 to 15 or 16? I can't remember. But I know that the beginning age was 12, so we've been administering this to 12-year-olds since 2001? Is that correct?
Would you mind?
Absolutely. So in the beginning, as I mentioned earlier, Cabarrus County Schools was a control site and there are very similar questions that we did ask back in 2001 as well. If you'll look on the handout to your right, under question number 15, one of the questions I thought was a phenomenal question, I don't know who came up with that, but it was great, but it really talked about the survey items that were introduced, were they new concepts for the children that you're speaking of, which are eighth graders? And the answer to that is, if you look at the sexual health curriculum of seventh graders, actually those items are covered under the standard course, the essential standards for seventh graders as well.
The board received an email, all of us up here received an email in May, from a parent who was concerned about these specific survey questions. And I specifically asked for the survey questions and we were given a time-sensitive link.
Right.
And, which I had never heard of. That's another question of, you know, there's a lot of curriculum materials out there, but I don't know of any that are time-sensitive.
Sure.
So that's one question.
Sure.
Why were those materials behind a time-sensitive link?
Sure. Great. Okay, so the time-sensitive link, it's a really good question. So the way that we had done parental review of survey items historically was very 20th century. And what I mean by that is, we invited parents to come to the school during the day when the school was open, if they had the time to and they had the resources to, to come to the school to review a hard copy of the survey, to leave it there, and then to go. That was the old way of reviewing the survey. When I took over this process, it was my feeling that that was not a transparent enough process and that created some real issues of accessibility, particularly to disenfranchise and poor families. So my thought there was, I need to do something that would be able to get the survey into the hands of people who might be able to see it, but wouldn't have the means to get down there. For example, a single mom who's working is not going to be able to get down to, say, I don't know, C.C. Griffin Middle School in the middle of the day because of her work schedule. Moreover, if they had transportation issues, that person would also not be able to get down there. So what I needed to do was create a method to be able to get that survey into the hands of parents. And at the same time, balance the research considerations, protecting the survey from being out in the public in a way where it would compromise the items significantly. So what I came up with was kind of a process to have it be time-sensitive. And if a parent were to say to me, geez, you sent that to me for 72 hours, I didn't have time to review it, my response would be, great, let me send you another one for another 72 hours. The idea was to make it time-sensitive so that we would not compromise the items themselves. So that was the intention behind it. It was really, I understand the interpretation that you're, that I think, and by the way, it's an inference, you have not said this at all, but what I'm inferring here is it is my inference.
You know me, John, I'll say it, but you can go ahead and infer it.
Yeah, the inference is that it was the opposite, that we were trying to keep it from people. I think quite the opposite is true. I think we created a lot of access to the survey. We created a great deal of access to the survey so parents could make an informed choice as to whether they wanted their child to participate or not. Does that, I hope I responded fully.
It does. If I want to go to a science curriculum standard, I can find it just like that. But for something like this, I can't find it. I've got to go to a time-sensitive thing and, you know, that's the discrepancy between what's considered a regular curriculum item and then all of a sudden, we're going to hide this thing. There's the word that I didn't avoid saying earlier. Hide behind something else, but that's the feedback I received.
Sure. So not for nothing, if I may, if my attempt was to hide that information, I did a really bad job. I sent out literally thousands of emails directing people to the link. And if the attempt was to hide, it would have, it was a pretty bad one. My attempt was really to create as much opportunity as possible for parents to see it and review it without compromising the items themselves. And I do think the actual items are different than the curriculum. So when you, when you want people-
Correct, they are. That's my next point.
Okay, so when you want people to review the content of the curriculum, you want everybody to see it for as long as possible. When researchers are gathering data, they don't necessarily want every item out there in the public domain to be reviewed by everybody. Now, those interested parties should have access to review them and that's why we made the link accessible.
You made a good point that the items are different than the curriculum.
Yes.
And in that email that you sent in May, that I responded to June 1st, I think, and then request-
Sure.
-for the survey items to be sent to us and to be added to the agenda, which was denied, there was a link to the curriculum for-
Right.
-Family Life as it is in the sixth, seventh, and eighth health curriculum. And the word abstinence is used about 17, I don't know, 16 times in that, you know, sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Right.
And the response that we received had sixth, seventh, and eighth curriculum items and that kind of thing, but that survey did not mention the word abstinence one time, which was a concern of mine and many of the parents that I talked to, which was about maybe three or four a day until it was canceled.
Right.
Any thoughts on why abstinence was not at all mentioned?
So I think abstinence is an implicit item if you select it, if you endorse the number zero or the term never, then that would be aligned with somebody who was engaging in abstinent practice, which by the way, I mean, which we uphold is the, you know, the way, the complete way to ensure pregnancy prevention and to prevent the transmission of STIs.
And if I could add to that, the, when you're doing the training, when we actually do the teacher training, that is something that we reinforce over and over again about the importance of making sure that students understand that abstinence is the 100, only 100% way. So although this is, you know, we're focusing on social determinants of health and really looking at those things that truly will empower students to make healthier decisions for themselves, which is that increase of self-esteem, self-efficacy, that really looking towards the future, knowing how to set goals. It's very much not a sexual health curriculum, but that is something that we reinforce at every turn.
So during our Family Life section of health, we send home a form to parents.
Right.
And we allow them to opt in or opt out. Sign our child up. And we did not do that. We gave them notice to opt out only.
So it's my understanding that we, in fact, with the Family Life curriculum, haven't opt out?
It's my understanding that it's opt in. But anyway, my question is, who made the decision and what was the thought process behind making it only opt out?
Sure.
And this opt-out happened in the end of May and the beginning of June.
Sure.
You know, people are very concerned that the hiding is continuing through the process of opting out. All the communication happened in June when all of these other things are happening at the same time.
Sure. And I understand, I understand the perception. I do understand the perception, though I do take exception to the term hiding. There was no attempt to hide anything. In fact, what we tried to do was to push forward the date so that families would be fully informed and would not be getting information during the deluge of the start of the school year. So in other words, we did not, my goals were to ensure what would be the best time to give this information. To give it at the beginning of the school year, my concern was it would be lost. It would be lost and all the information that comes home at the beginning of the school year. To give it over the summer, my concern it would be lost because people might not be looking for information from the school as much over the summer, especially in this area. This seemed to me to be the best time to be able to do it would be in that time period of May 19th to June 23rd. It would be at a time where the school year was coming to an end, where parents were thinking forward to the school year ahead and where perhaps they might have a little bit more discretionary time as their school year, as the school year was ending or had just ended. So again, I do understand the impression, but the attempt was really to hit what I thought would be the best time to reach parents. So that, so I think one part of your question was about timing. The other part was about opt-in versus opt-out. And there's a few things about the decision to opt out and I just made some notes on it and I didn't want to lose track of them. So forgive me if I look at my notes for a moment. And it was my understanding that, and it is my understanding, that the Healthful Living curriculum is an opt-out and not an opt-in. And so therefore, for me, for my thoughts, the idea of asking parents to engage in an opt-in for a survey, but an opt-out for an entire curriculum, it seemed to be confusing at best. Moreover, I was concerned that as parents would be opting, opting into, opting out of a survey, would they also think that they're opting out of the curriculum? So I've tried to make that distinction as well for parents, to be as transparent as possible for that. Furthermore, it's my understanding from the program evaluated at Portland State University that the opt-out really is the best practice. It really is the best practice for a survey of this, for this size. And moreover, until I received those, that information from the parent you mentioned on, in that last week of May, I hadn't had feedback that was saying that an opt-in was preferable from parents. I did receive at that time, a handful, and when I say handful, I'll say under five, probably close to three, including the one that wrote, you and all the board members, to say that they would, their preference was an opt-in versus an opt-out. So there was not a lot of feedback and there did not seem to historically be a push for an opt-in.
So those students who opted out of the Family Life section of the health curriculum, were those students automatically opted out for this survey as well? Since those topics were not covered for those students because their parents chose not to participate, did we automatically not allow them to participate?
I did not automatically opt them out of this survey.
Okay. If a student-
And part of our, I'm sorry, part of the internal review board process with our agreement with Portland, because we have to follow very rigorous evaluation standards, we would have to do a separate opt-out. And that's only fair to parents too. In addition, then we allow the students that same opportunity as they're taking that survey.
If there's a child with a known case of molestation or sexual assault or abuse, were they automatically removed from the survey and not subjected to these- were they automatically removed from the survey and not subjected to these very graphic questions?
So the question is if we've known about a student who's, um, been sexually assaulted or sexually abused, did we automatically opt them out?
Correct.
No, I did not seek a list of known sexually abused students to opt out of the survey.
And you just mentioned that we didn't vet this since 2001 or that kind of thing?
I, no, sir, I don't think I said that.
I said, we've been doing, we've been doing what we've been doing, and that was kind of the rationale, or we look at it, did we have any teachers look at this survey prior to implementing it to eighth graders slash 12-year-olds this year?
Are you, so is the question from this year? No, we did not.
I'm sorry.
No, I got it. Um, we didn't, no, we, I did not, I did not have teachers review the survey.
Other board members, Ms. Carpenter?
I'm, I'm kind of confused here because the dates have been thrown around, and I want to kind of get, because the que, the very first question, this 2001 date has come up, and then I got 2016, 2015, 2016, 17, when we actually took this program over. So I want to make sure when we took the, the, this program over, because, you know, I hear, we've been doing it 16 years, we've been doing it three years, how long have we been doing it? So let's, let's get this cleared up for sure, how long we've been doing it.
Thank you.
Because, you know, I know a lot of board members didn't know anything about this survey, and then, you know, I've heard five people complain, I, I know my email blew up, I had more, a lot more than five, five people, and then two, uh, I've got more than one que, let, let's get that one answered first.
Thank you for that opportunity, and I can, I can talk through that a little bit.
Okay.
So the Trail Program has had the same name for, since 2001. With that, we have not had continuous funding, so each project is different, it's a little bit different, and that, I think that's what's so ironic about where we are today, is because this project is less focused on sexual health than any other project we have done. So it leans towards more the conservative nature of our community, quite honestly. When you look at the curriculum which you guys have at your place, you will see that it's very much about the social determinants of health and really trying to empower students in a way that helps them to make that healthier decision. So the original Trail started in 2001, and it was with, our target population was Conopla City Schools. At that time, Cabarrus County Schools chose to be a control site, so it was eighth and ninth graders, and they participated in that survey. So we had that survey, we lost funding for a year because we did the cycle, and then we got refunded. So each project, we kind of tweaked as it went along, so the curriculum developed, we took in consideration a lot of research, a lot of changes within the community realities that we have experienced here in Cabarrus County, but also what the cutting edge was saying about the best way to prevent teen pregnancy, but also to increase some of those other goals we talked about that are more in line with Cabarrus County Schools. So it's ebbed and flowed as far as the curriculum goes, it's not been the same project, it's been a different project, and survey instruments are, are basically developed based on that.
So it hadn't been that same survey?
Right, right, not the exact same, but the, the survey questions are still, still had that sexual health and asking about not only intention for sex, but also have you had sexual intercourse, have you had? So the, you know, the survey instrument, we've asked very similar questions since 2001.
And John, you reviewed this particular survey in 2015 when it started?
That's right.
Right, and it was definitely vetted. Uh, we did have, for the curriculum, we certainly had teachers, Mr. Powell, I know you asked specifically about teachers, um, we had community partners, professionals at the university level, but also teachers, we want to make sure we take that in consideration, that actually reviewed that curriculum and helped us develop that curriculum to make sure it was for that population.
Looking at this book or the curriculum, I don't see any problem. I'm with Mr. Powell, though, I mean, you say, well, gee, I, I say about abstain, I mean, but it's nice to have it in a printed book when you see, don't do it. It makes a whole lot more sense.
Right.
And it really sticks in my mind when it says, don't do it.
Right.
Uh, you know, that makes, that makes you think twice, and then you don't have to worry about the STDs, you don't have to worry about the IUDs, you don't have to worry about all those things, uh, if you're not doing it. Uh, so, I mean, that, when it's printed and you see that, that makes a lot more, and again, you didn't see that. And then on all the stuff that we read, I never once seen in the MOU and the printed material, never once saw anywhere in the MOU or anything where they said there was going to be a survey. Nowhere in the criteria. Uh, I'm talking about, like I say, in the MOU that he signed, and, and that, never once did we see there's going to be a survey done once a year.
I think there's something in there about data collection processes and helping with that, um, probably did not, maybe, maybe didn't use the word survey, but certainly talked about data collection.
Well, it did not plainly state, you'd like to see it plainly stated, there's going to be a survey done once a year. And then two, the other question that I had, I noticed that in reading the materials, it says, okay, if you opt out, if a child opts out, we're going to take you somewhere else, and we're going to let you do another health-related thing. Did the school or somebody else check and see what other health thing are they going to be doing? Did somebody from the system know what those child, those children are doing?
We did, and it's actually a word search. It literally was just a, a, a word search for them to circle, and part of that is to maintain the integrity of the environment for the survey to take place, so we wanted, we didn't want them to feel ostracized, we wanted them to be able to have an activity to do as well, um, so they're not just sitting there while other people are participating in the survey. And they are staying in the classroom, they do stay in the classroom.
I mean, when you say words, I mean, it's, I mean, what kind of word, I mean, is, is it looking for?
Not pregnancy prevention.
What kind of words are they looking for? I mean, what, I mean, but is somebody, did he look at what they're doing, or did a teacher look at what they're doing?
It's just, you, you did at one time, and it was just like a, literally, it's, it may say like elephant, or, you know, I'd have to have it in front of me, but it's not even related to, um, I'd have to look at it.
Well, and the thing it said was going to be a health-related thing. That's why I was wondering, what kind of material are they doing? Did our people say, okay, this is okay for them to do?
Sure, I'm happy to add it.
And the reason I'm asking, we have a policy that says, any of the materials that our curriculum's going to be due, we have a group that's going to say, that's okay to do. So this is why the questions I'm asking.
Sure.
Are being asked.
Sure.
Because we're supposed to say, okay, that's okay to do.
Sure.
And I know that a lot of this stuff was back, way back. The, the North Carolina State says, you're going to teach certain things. So we are under state regulations to do certain things that we have to do, and I know we've got those, those requirements that we do have to do.
Mr. Walter?
Well, as a parent of an eighth grader and a ninth grader, um, just from my perspective, I don't think we did a very good job of presenting it to the parent, because I actually don't recall seeing an opt-out. Um, and I'm on the board, but I, as a parent, um, I did, the eighth grader I spoke to, and they did say before they took the survey, they had, it was voluntary, and he opted not to do it, but he still got a movie ticket apparently, or he was bribing kids with movie tickets or something, but, so, but the ninth grader did take the survey, but I didn't really recall ahead, ahead of time, and I, I just, what did we do that was so different this year that we're getting all the response? There's obviously something that was done differently.
Right.
Either the survey or the, the age group or what? What is, what is the, because I, I think it may, I mean, personally, I think it's inappropriate for eighth graders for, for that survey. High schoolers maybe not, but.
So respectfully, and I, and I respect your, your perspective on that completely, I believe that the reason you're getting more response is because it's more visible. I believe what's happened in the past is no, no connected phone call went out, no connected email went, went out, no website was built with an opt-out form for parents to be able to click and opt out if they chose to. I think what you're seeing is actually the result of being more transparent about the survey, and that's not to say that we've hidden it before. That just did, that was just the practice prior, is that people would take an opt-out form home if it was not returned. It was the, like many opt-outs, it was assumed that that student would be opted in. I think we did a very good job of reaching out to parents and, and, and raising the profile for them to be able to do this. So as parents became more aware, I understand that that was upsetting to them, and they reached out to you all, they reached out to me, um, and I've had a lot of conversations with them about it, um, but I think it's, I.
And that's what we wanted, we truly wanted parents to have that right to opt out. One thing I will say from a historical perspective, that this current administration under Dr. Louder, you know, and Mr. Basilese, really challenged us, because this is not, we weren't, we did not give all those ways. John really was very much a pusher of this to say, I want to do something online, I want to have, I want to give parents more than one option to opt out. So we actually did more than we've ever done before in terms of trying to notify parents, and, you know, I have to give kudos to this administration to, that really kind of pushed that for us.
Yeah, so the idea there was that they could mail it in, they could fax it in, they could email it in, they could do the electronic form online, they could have a student turn it in. We wanted to give people the opportunity to be fully informed and, and choose to opt out if they wanted to.
Didn't I read that this is the first time we've given it to eighth grade?
No, sir, we have given it, and we've given it to eighth grade before as a control study. And again, the survey questions.
Same, same survey questions?
The survey questions have ebbed and flowed over the years based on, but they did all have sexual activity on there about whether or not they had, some of it was intended, do you intend to have sex in middle school, do you intend to have sex in high school? If you look at the outcome data that I've been able to provide, it talks about how successful we were with that, that you did have a far more percentage of folk, of eighth and ninth graders intending to remain abstinent than those in the control group. Um, so we've been effective over the years, it really has been a, uh, you know, a project that has shown great success and great outcomes in the years that we've had it.
One consideration, which I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, and I'm sorry, it's just hitting me now, one of your questions was what's different, the scale's different. I mean, it was not, it did not used to be every eighth, every, um, eighth grade, it did not used to be every.
Very good point.
School, it would be selected or indicated schools. So it might be two schools, and this year, it's, it's all schools. So perhaps with the, the profile being raised to that degree, perhaps that, um, also, maybe that increased the level of response you received from the community.
So a health teacher called me last night and said, I just wish we would have known. I just wish we could see these questions beforehand so we can tell the students what's going on, or the parents, giving, giving them a heads up for, uh, ahead of time. And the, this, this particular health teacher said, there was not a health teacher in, anywhere near that survey before it was given out. That, that was their main concern of, why didn't we involve, uh, teachers? We, we pulled teachers in for everything. Oh, my goodness, they're here all through the summer, and we pay them, you know, stipends for this and that, but for something like this, we just didn't involve them, and that was very upsetting to this.
I understand.
Teacher at 9:30 last night.
Sure. So I'm not sure if there's a question or a response. Okay, so, um, it's, it's valid feedback for consideration, absolutely.
I suppose the, the question from here is, where do we go from here? Are we done with it? I mean, we're, we're, what is the next step? I mean, I mean, with the feedback we got, you know, the survey that, that went out, I mean, they were not happy, our parents were, but where do we go from this point?
That's a great question, and Dr. Louder and I, and I'll, please, you can expand on this, but we will have a meeting with the funder, which is the Office of Adolescent Health, and we will have a meeting with them on Thursday to talk through exactly what has happened in our community, um, and then try to, um, negotiate what, what is acceptable for us to continue to get funding, because this was close to $3 million in resources that we were bringing to the district. Um, and I really do hope that you guys will take an opportunity to look at how comprehensive and what outcomes we have realized as a result of the Trail Project. Um, so our hope is to continue efforts and to continue, continue programming. I have a good feeling that if people were to look at the curriculum and look at the value that the student population is getting from this project, they would agree that we would want to continue this project. Um, and then we will find out, um, we've, quite honestly, just got mixed messages from our funder in terms of the requirement of the survey, what exactly we would have to do, but again, we were very wise to pull that, um, to give everybody an opportunity to kind of look to see what the next steps will be. Cabarrus Health Alliance will know more on Thursday.
Which schools participated in the survey before it was canceled?
It's all of our intervention schools.
Okay, Freeze?
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, right.
Jan Freez, Concord Middle, Northwest Middle, and.
Griffin.
Griffin, CC Griffin, thank you, sorry.
And I'm not aware of any complaints from those four schools that took the survey, am I correct of that?
We, we honored opt-out, certainly, but.
Right.
Not any real complaints, no, sir.
Right.
And I will say, the complaints that we did get, without exception, every parent that we had talked to, um, felt much better about the survey, they, some of which even changed their mind, and instead of opting out, they opted in once they learned more about the program and what that was, so we did have those experiences as well. Um, so as long, those parents that we've gotten to talk to have been very favorable results.
Thank you, sir. Um, I can't say we, and I can only say myself.
Sure.
So I'll only speak for myself.
Okay.
But I hope it is more than just myself, that I value the partnership with the Health Alliance, and I value it probably only second to our SROs, which I hope is a high compliment to the partnership that we've got with you and that we want to maintain and keep and continue. I, I don't know how to say that. Again, I'm just saying it to my, for myself, but I hope the rest of the board and everyone else here deeply and sincerely feels that it is a crucial partnership to sustain, uh, between our two entities. Um, and maybe transparency and, um, planning need a great deal of work going forward. Um, and I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. We need to say to Cabarrus parents that we are sorry, that we apologize, and I'm saying the, the corporate joint "we" here, that we are sorry and that we apologize. And, and that's nowhere in here. That, that, those magic words are nowhere in here. Something didn't work out right, I'm not going to point fingers, I don't want to make assumptions, but we should say, we're sorry and that we apologize. I'm saying, you know, everybody. But again, thank you for working with us in the past and in the future.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, thank y'all for coming forward, I appreciate it, and, uh, you know, Dr. Philkton is working well with Dr. Louder, we would love to hear how the outcomes come of this, because, again, I think that there's a lot of value in this. Yes, the survey has created quite a stir for us, and, and, and I think once you talk to the, um, the researchers about that, they, they might have a better solution for, for that, but I'd hate to throw the whole, the whole thing out because of a survey that kind of went awry on us, and, uh, at the same time, you know, board members, parents, you need to read your information if you get it, because there were several emails that said, I didn't bother to read my information, I didn't bother to look at it, I didn't take time, and our children are about the time that we take with them, and that's, that's, that came out in this, because the, the sorries go not only from maybe this level, but it goes to the parents themselves, and they need to say, I'm sorry, I didn't understand, and I didn't take time, and, and, and that's come out, too, so, thank y'all again for this, and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
One last question. So you, you've already covered most of the schools, so you've got majority of your surveys already returned, is that?
So, um, that's 50% of the schools.
So 50%?
Since there's eight middle schools.
Which is how many, how many surveys?
Um, I couldn't say the exact number right off, off-hand, um.
It's over 1,000, I will say it's over 1,000. I have that intervention.
So you still, you have a significant participation still, anyway, so you've got data that you can use.
Right, we have the intervention because it's rigorous evaluation, so we started with. So we started with the intervention because of contamination. So we wanted to make sure we got them surveyed first so we could go in and start doing programming. And then the, the schools who were left are the control schools, the control sites, so yes.
So I think without the control schools, though, you don't have a basis of comparison, right? You don't have a way to say, the intervention schools that received Trail outperformed the schools that did not by blank percent. You don't, you don't have a basis for that comparison.
And I will say, looking at the opt-outs, one of the things that Chairman Schumaker said, which I think is very important, and I don't want to see this program go either, because I think we're only talking about one sector of parents, which are the ones that opted out. But there are some parents who are very much in support of having this type of programming in the schools. So it's, it's, the way that we did this process was to give parents, all parents, a voice. So not only, so if we go just for the opt-outs and those parents, that one of the program would not have that voice. So we were trying to make sure everybody had a voice, quite honestly.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, but the, the issue first came to us because an opt-out student did not get opted out. That's, that was the, that was not on you at all. And, and the curriculum is not the concern whatsoever. It was the implementation of the inappropriate questions to the 12-year-olds. That's, that's been my, that's where it started. So I just want to make sure that's.
And I will say, we have not, you know, we have, the way that we do the opt-outs, just because I think that process is important, is that if a parent opts out, we have, not only does John Basilese get that, our, we have an internal employee that gets that, who is my program manager, and then we have another employee that goes through. Cards are made, a survey, a student who opts out cannot even get access to that survey. So I'm not sure if that was miscommunication. The only way that that could happen is if an opt-out came after the surveying. So we have not had any student thus far that opted out that got the survey that we have been told.
Yeah, there's one, there's that one that you all were informed of where we were not able to conclusively say what happened to that opt-out form. If I can just say one thing, just to clarify. You know, I've seen emails, I've received emails, I've received a lot of phone calls, and the numbers have been thrown around, 12-years-old, 11-years-old. This is an eighth-grade survey, so that would tend to be 13- and 14-year-old students as opposed to 12. And, and perhaps you say that's a distinction without a difference, but the data tells us differently. The prevention data tells us that 13 is a critical age for interventions. So, I mean, that's part, so when the question was asked earlier about why eighth grade, that's part of it, is trying to get upriver on some of the, the behaviors you're trying to prevent.
Have you looked at the survey?
Yes, I have.
It says 12-years-old.
Okay.
One of the questions on it is, it says, check the box if you are 12-years-old. 13-years-old, 14, 15, I don't know where it stops. But that's one of the questions on it. So if that survey's not designed for 12-year-olds, then I'm not, I'm looking at something different.
But if I, if I can, Mr. Powell, this is an important thing, and I, and I'm so glad you said that because I think I understand part of the confusion or part of the misunderstanding. That survey at the national level has been given to young people as young as in sixth grade. So it's, so that.
We chose not to.
So that part is relatively boilerplate.
I, I got a higher bar than that, I'm sorry.
No, but what I'm saying to you, sir, is that, that I suppose we could have clipped the, the 12-year-old age and just left it to 13, 14, et cetera. But the idea there was that, that you're just endorsing the item that, that suited your age. I don't know if it's possible, I don't know if it's even possible to reach out to the Portland State folks and find out, were there any people who endorsed the 12-year-old age? I would, I would tend to doubt it because it's given at eighth grade.
And part of this is a national survey, so a big piece of that is, it's not, we chose as a community not to deliver this to sixth graders or seventh graders. But if that is a, if that is, we're one of 22 across the nation that has been funded. So there may be some communities that did choose to do it at the sixth-grade level. I think we very wisely, and Cabarrus County School very wisely said, let's just look at eighth and ninth grade for this.
Which we saw as the most vulnerable ages for prevention activities.
There's a recent report that talked about 30% of STD, we just had a 30% increase in STD rates. And if you look at the ages, it really does speak to that need to intervene, to have those interventions earlier.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a quick question? Kind of a, educate me question. When we are, when we use the word opt-in or opt-out in this conversation, are we talking about the Cabarrus County School Board's policies about opting in or opting out? Or the Health Alliance's on internal processes? I mean, we have explicit policies, and you have an approach to opting in or out. But which approach are we talking about? A blend of the two, or one or the other, or, or what? What's the governing definition of opt-in, opt-out as in this context?
That's a good point. We followed what Cabarrus County Schools does for their health curriculum, yes, sir.
Our policy is the opt-out discussion point.
That's, that's right. And I'll have to research the policy to be able to speak more, you know, speak more thoroughly on it with you. I don't have it in front of me right now.
No, no, I wouldn't have. But, but we're trying to abide by our policy in this case. Thank you.
Yes, I'm always trying to abide by our policy. It's something I, I'm strongly trying to uphold, as you know.
That pretty much is how all things that we do are handled, which is opt-out. I mean, it's, it's pretty much, it's not just in this area, it's in just about every area that we cover. And again, like I said, John sent emails and Connect Eds, which is, you know, I guess the one thing that's changed is that we've communicated this more than we ever have, right?
And social media is different for parents to be able to communicate as well.
Right.
All right, board members? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Is there a motion to adjourn now?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
David Harrison seconds that motion. Ms. Carpenter makes the. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We adjourn.